Good morning. Oh, I have, sorry. I have echoes here on my computers. Wait, just a minute. Do I? I have this turned off already. Oh, no. Okay. All right. I'll try again. Good morning. Welcome. In accordance with Session 45 and 53 of the Planning Act 1990 as amended, this meeting of the Committee of Adjustment of City of Toronto is called to order. The Committee of Adjustment consider application for variances from the provisions of the zoning that applies to property, permission to extend or alter lawful or nonconforming uses, and also consent to survey property to create new lots. My name is Yim Chan. I will be chairing today's hearing, and I'd like to introduce our panel members today. From my far left is Ms. LaSila West and Mr. Mary Clay, and also Mr. Ryan Bissonnet. Joining us online is Dylan, Mr. Dylan Reed, and also our deputy secretary, Trissala, also got a cold. She will be joining us online. On my right-hand side is our supporting staff. So I would also like to acknowledge that the land we are meeting on is the traditional territory of many nations, including the Musa Sogus of the Credit, the Anaslabi, the Chibawei, and the Hora Sunni, and the Wanda Peoples, and is now home to many diverse nations, Inuit and Métis people. We also acknowledge that Toronto is under Treaty 13 with the Musa Sogus of the Credit. And Committee of Adjustment public hearing now are conducted in a hybrid in-person and virtual format. Some applicants and participants will make their submission in person and others will participate virtually by electronic means through web apps. The meetings are also streamed on the City of Toronto Planning YouTube channel, and anyone wishing to view the hearing may watch on YouTube. Those who want to participate virtually and have registered in advance will be connected with their computer, tablet, smartphone, or telephone, and have the options of participating via video or audio only. All virtual participants will automatically be muted on entry. When your item is called, you will be unmuted by the moderator, one person at a time. We ask that you also mute your devices until your call to speak. Those participating by video appearance will be temporarily upgraded to panelists when your item is being held. During this time, your camera will be enabled, and you'll be only be visible during your five-minute speaking time. At all other times, your video will be disabled, and you will be reinstated as an attendee. For both in-person and virtual participants, Committee of Adjustment staff will share presentations submitted in accordance with the written submission deadline. Those participating through web apps are not allowed to use share screen or any other panelist controls during the video appearance. The host will remove you from the panelist role if you fail to respect this instruction. How to receive a copy of the decision of the committee? People attending in person today who want to receive a copy of the decision of the committee on an application must fill out a decision request card, and those participating virtually and submit a written request for the decision via email. Please ensure that you include your name, address, and email address, because the Committee of Adjustment and the Toronto local appeal body, T-Labs, will be sending notifications and appeal updates by email. If you do not agree with the decision of committee, you may be able to appeal the decision to T-Lab, or in some limited circumstances, to the Ontario Land Tribunal. However, the provincial government amended the Planning Act and generally moved rights of third parties to appeal Committee of Adjustment decisions. Only the applicant, the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing, specified persons or public bodies, such as those determined are defined in the Planning Act, are permitted to appeal decision of the Committee of Adjustment. Appeal instructions are set out at the bottom of the decision of the committee. Now I will read out the hearing procedure. When I call each item in the order listed on the agenda, when making your submission and when an applicant is uncontested, the agent or applicant may proceed with the presentation if desired. When the committee does not require presentation, applicants are to advise the chair should they wish to speak to the committee. The committee may ask questions and/or take the matter into committee for a decision. Each speaker, including the applicant or agent, will be given a maximum of five minutes to address the committee, and I will comment when you are approaching your five minutes. Any presentation or materials you wish to submit to the committee must have been emailed in advance of the hearing. Staff and committee member cannot accept material at the hearing. When addressing the committee, please clearly state your name and address. Please remember to confine your remarks to matters outlined in the application. The applicant or agent will proceed first and will make a presentation to committee. And please note, the committee may not entertain revisions to proposals at the hearing day. The committee may decide to defer the application if substantially revised to ensure the revised application is accurate and that all those entitled to notice of the application are in form of the changes. Then individuals either in support or opposed to the application will be invited to speak. Generally, we will first call on speakers in the hearing room and then those participating through web apps. Committee members may ask of each speaker after they have finished their presentation. When all the speakers have finished, their applicant or agent have opportunity to rebut only those issues that were raised by the speakers. This will mark the end of the discussion. The applicant will then be taken into committee for a decision. And for the, with our deputy secretary available, is there any kind of declaration of conflict interests? Not from the, no. Okay. And do we have any deferral requests in this session?
Through you, Madam Chair. Good morning. It's Sabrina Salatino here. First, the minutes from the January 29 hearing, those are ready for adoption. So we'll need a motion to adopt those minutes.
Yes. Do we have a motion for that? Yeah, Mr. Clay have a motion to adopt the January 29 meeting. Second, please. Mr. Bissonnet, second. All in favor? Ryan? Yeah. No. Mr. Reed, yes. All unanimously approved.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So there is one file that the agent is going to be asking to withdraw and close.
Yes.
That's item number three, 256 Major Street, file number A0933/24TEY. We also have two deferral requests for this morning's hearing. Item number two, 8 Chatham Avenue, file number A880/24TEY, as well as item number 13, 205 Forest Hill Road, file number A1029/24TEY. So at this time, we can deal with items three for closure and then items two and 13 for deferral.
Okay. So let's have a motion to close item number three. Mr. Bissonnet?
Is the agent with us?
Oh, this, do we have an agent? Anyone speak to this item? Ms. Salatino? Or we can just have a motion to close it?
Through you, Madam Chair. We have Ida on the line here, the agent for number three.
Okay. So let, yeah, let's hear him first.
Through you, Madam Chair. I'm going to try calling them again.
Okay.
Hello, Ida. You've been unmuted.
Good morning. Can you hear me now?
We can hear you well.
Perfect. Okay. All right. I could hear you previously, but you can hear me. Good morning, Madam Chair. Ida Evangelis on behalf of the owners of 256 Major.
Yes.
And I respectfully would like to withdraw this application.
Yes. They decided not to pursue. It's just to close the file now.
Madam Chair, I joined the team late, and when I was reviewing the application...
You're recording scheduled maximum length. If you are satisfied with your message, press 1. To listen to your message, press 2. To erase and re-record it, press 3. For delivery option.
Hello.
Hello?
Yes.
Hi. Not sure what happened there. So I joined the team late when I was reviewing the materials. I realized and noticed that a variance wasn't required after all, and that for that reason we are withdrawing. They now have the building permit in hand, and they're continuing with construction.
Oh, good. So we're just going to close the file, and good luck with the construction. Okay?
Thank you so much.
Thank you. So we need a motion to close it? Yeah, Mr. Bissonnet, a motion second? Ms. West, second? All in favor to, yes, all in favor unanimously. It's closed. Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members, have a great day.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
And, okay, now we have two deferral requests. The first one is item number two. You put an item number two. Do we have the agent here or online to tell us why they requested deferral? Please. 108 Chatham Avenue.
Are you reading it into the record?
Oh, do we need to? Okay. All right. So, yeah, this application is to order the rear two-story ossidory building containing a laneway street, and it's currently under construction and was a minor variance approval decision, but this time they're asking for the building height. And we receive a copy of survey site plan, floor plans, and elevations, and eight photographs of the subject property, and decisions affecting the property. We also receive urban forestry comment, and we receive one opposition from Andrew Mill, but no address provided. And can we have, do we have the agent?
Fyzen, you've been unmuted.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Fidan Akhtar of FDR Street, 1237 Woodbine Avenue, Toronto, Ontario, M4C45. We're requesting a deferral to address some of the concerns from the zoning departments.
Okay. You're going to, need more time to work with the building, right?
Yes, please.
Okay. And you do, is there any other people or person want to speak to this deferral request?
Through you, Madam Chair. I don't see anybody else in the room here, and there's nobody else on the speakers list.
So I think that's, you say that this is under construction. Are you going to wait for the approval before you continue, or how?
Yes.
Okay.
So it was, the approval was previously granted a few years ago, I think in 2021 or 2022. I was agent at that time as well. And what happened was they constructed, I mean, everything was approved by the building inspector, too. The foundation went up, the framing went up, everything was approved. And later they found out that the separation between the main building and the laneway home is slightly less, right, for which we're asking for one, it's actually only one height restriction that we have, but we do need to resolve a few items with the zoning examiner before we can proceed.
Okay. Thank you. That's a good reason. Okay. Do we have a motion? It's just to clarify the variances and, Ms. West, yes?
Through you, Madam Chair. A motion to defer the application.
Yes. Anyone second that motion? Mr. Bissonnet, second? All in favor for deferral? Yes, all in favor unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
And now, yeah, it's the defer. Thank you. And the next item for deferral is item number 13. Number 13 is 205 Forest Hill Road. This is to construct a new three-story detached dwelling with an integral garage, a east-side entrance with stairs, and a rear ground floor deck, and a rear second-story balcony, and a rear third-floor terrace with a rear basement walkout. We receive a survey site plan, floor plans, and elevations, arborist report, and we receive comment from natural, within natural feature protection, and also we receive support from four addresses on Forest Hill Road, and also receive later another two addresses from Forestry Road. We receive oppositions from 191 Chaplain Crescent and also 201 Forest Hill Road, and we also, with further materials in opposition from 201 Forestry Road. Okay. Do we have the agent online or here to tell us why they request a deferral? Please.
Through you, Madam Chair. We have the agent on the line and two registered speakers online.
Okay. Yes.
Sia, you've been unmuted.
Yes. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the committee. My name is Sia Zanjani from Zanjani Architects, Inc., and I'm the applicant for this, I'm the agent for this application. My address is 15 Allstate Parkway, Markham, Ontario.
Okay. We're just discussing the deferral first. Can you tell us why you require?
Absolutely, yeah. So we have a, we have a report from RNFP that we would like to address. I feel like that would take some time for us to address. We also have a, an opposition letter from a well-respected neighbor or immediate neighbor to the east, number 201, and with discussions with our clients, they would like to kind of defer this application, have some time to have, you know, a constructive type of conversation with, work out the differences, and hopefully we will come back and come back to Committee of Adjustment soon.
Okay. So you will contact the opposition and try to work some compromise?
Really, that's the, that is the plan, and that's the reason for the deferral, yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. We have a couple of other speakers would like to speak to the deferral. We can bring them on now.
Jonathan, you've been unmuted.
Thank you very much. Jonathan Robinson here, the neighbor to the immediate east, 201 Forest Hill Road. Say that we're actually pleased with the deferral. We've lived here 29 years, have had excellent relations with the applicant for the last 10 years, and we're looking forward to addressing some of the concerns regarding the trees, the privacy, the outdoor platforms. Basically, the majority of the variance is being applied for, but I'm sure we can come to a compromise.
Good. I'm glad you agreed to the deferral. Okay. Thank you very much. Yes. So let's bring in the next speaker for the deferral request.
This is Connor Wickson, address, ODB Resource Group, address 611 Trade Wind Drive, Unit 500 in Ancaster, Ontario. I'm the arborist for Jonathan at 201 Forest Hill Road, the immediate neighbor.
Oh, I see.
So that arborist report is mine, and we support the deferral. And I note that that ravine report from Urban Forestry has recommended refusal and also requested deferral to address the issues with the bylaw-protected trees that will be impacted, which is the issue I was going to speak to.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. That makes more sense to have a deferral to work these things out, right? Okay. Thank you. So you support the deferral. Okay. Thank you.
Yes, that's correct. Thank you.
Thank you. So that's all the speakers for the deferral, right? That's all the speakers? Okay. Let's back to the panel. Ms. West, yes?
Yes. Through you, Madam Chair. I would like to put forward a motion to defer the application so that the applicant have enough time to review the RNFP staff report as well as talking with the neighbors.
Yes. Thank you. Anyone second? Any second? Ms. Bissonnet, second? All in favor for the deferral? All in favor defer? Thank you. Okay. That's, so let's go back to item number one. Item number one is number 23, number 23 Lindsay Avenue. This is to order the two-and-a-half-story semi-detached dwelling, and by constructing a rear one-story addition, abutting Gladstone Avenue. And they have a previous minor variance application for similar approval, but was recently refused. And we receive a copy of the survey site plan, floor plans, and elevations, two photographs of this property, and a cover letter by the agent, decisions affecting the property, and also supporting a corresponding from 170 Lindsay Avenue. And we have received support from 175 Lisker Avenue, and also 20 signature petitions in support. And we receive opposition from 21 Lindsay Avenue. And let's, the agent, online, either online or in person?
Through you, Madam Chair. We have the agent here in person and an opposition speaker also in person.
Yes. Please come up. And, yes. Can you sit down, and then we can see you on the, in the camera, I think? And you turn on the mic, yeah, then.
Good morning, members of the committee. My name is Michael Tome, and I'm here to present my minor variance application.
Can you also give us your address, too?
It's 20, yeah, construction for the garage at 23 Lindsay Avenue.
Oh, you're, okay.
Let's get in there. Sorry, Ms. Chair.
Yeah. So you have five minutes. You do have some opposition, so we will require you to give us a brief presentation, so.
Sure. That's fine. Okay. Which I believe is in line with the broader goals of the Toronto Official Plan, particularly in regards to the residential development and land use designation under Chapter Four. My proposal aligns with the intent of the Toronto Official Plan, which seeks to foster development which is compatible with the established character of the residential neighborhoods. The property is within the neighborhood area where accessory structures like garages are permitted, provided they meet specific criteria. This variance will not be altered, well, sorry, will not alter the general character of the neighborhood and the design of the garage which complement the surrounding properties. In fact, similar structures and variances exist in the area, demonstrating that this request is keeping with the local context, which I have pictures that I submitted to the committee.
Mm-hmm.
So that is the front landscape of the house. If you can keep on going, there's pictures of actual photos of the neighborhood with So, yeah, if you go back down, go back one. So the top one is my home. The one below is a neighboring property that has something similar. And if you can keep on flipping to the next page, there's another one that's just kind of down the street.
Mm-hmm.
If you can keep on going, there's another one which is on Dover Court and College. If you can keep on going, please, there's another one which is in the surrounding areas. And that one there is, which is very important, which is kind of similar to, it's down the street on Gladstone and College. If you look at the houses, one is connect the garage. They have now like a garden in front of it, but there used to be a driveway in those two garages. That is what the Lindsay, my home, and the house just south of us used to look like back in the day, the 80s. So I just pretty much want to bring the garage back to what it was.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. The variance requested is minor in nature and will have, not have significant negative impacts on the adjacent properties or the overall streetscape. It is desirable for the appropriate development of my property, improving functionality by providing off-street parking and reducing street congestion. Additionally, the garage design has been carefully considered to ensure the complements of the aesthetic of the neighborhood and does not negatively impact privacy, shadowing, or views of the neighboring properties. In conclusion, I believe this minor variance meets the criteria set out by the committee, maintaining general intent and purpose of the official plan and zoning bylaw. I respectfully request your approval for this application, and thank you for your considerations.
Okay.
Do you have letters also?
Yes.
That you, sorry, Madam Chair, that you have kind of stated earlier?
Yeah.
The petitions, the neighbor's letter, that he stated that there was a garage there before. He left his boat in there. He parked his car on the driveway, which is submitted also.
Thank you. Do you have questions?
Yeah. Before we hear from the opposition, just a point of clarification, sir. You were here previously with this application?
Correct.
Which was refused. Is this application changed from that before, or is it?
There were setbacks that were done to the drawings for the, I guess, city, there were setbacks done to the drawings. There were setbacks from the property line.
But are the variances that you requested previously, are they changed today? Are they the same variances?
Same variance, sir.
Okay. That's, just wanted to clarify.
I didn't, I ran out of time to appeal, so that's why I'm here today.
Okay. So your hope is to either get approved today or to appeal?
My hope is to get approved today.
Okay. Thank you.
That's, that's one question, too, actually. Yeah. Thank you. Yeah. Now we can, we have some opposition want to speak. Let's have this first.
Victor and Anna, you can come up to the podium, please.
Want to push the red button, sir, in front of you?
Madam Chair, members of the committee, good morning. Good morning, attendees. I am here today to address...
Tell us your address, too. That's for the...
21... My name is Victor Alvarez and Anna Alvarez, 21 Lindsay Avenue.
21, okay, yeah. Right, yeah.
I'm here to address concerns regarding the applicant's request for a minor variance on a corner load semi-detached house. This is the second time the applicant has presented data that misrepresents the true scope and variance, minimizing its impact. As the only abating neighbor directly affected, I am concerned about the sunlight, the significant loss of sunlight at my backyard porch, kitchen, and backyard, spaces where I spend summertime with my family. This loss of light not only diminishes our quality of life, but also undermines the integrity of the community's property values and livability. I ask the committee to carefully consider the situations. Now, I'm just going to point some data calculations that in the plan that impacts the integrity of the proposal. Can you kindly give me a close-up of the area data calculations of Superseed CA Plan revised November... Received on November 20... November 4, 2024? Now, as a quick reminder, the first application was refused because, among other things, the integrity was compromised due to a misrepresentation of the proposed garage area, presented as 15.05 square meters instead of 32.25 square meters, which compromised the calculation of the floor space index.
Can I see a close-up of the Superseed plans, please, and the data calculation? It's the Superseed... The first one, and the data calculation, a close-up, please. The data calculation.
You mean the little chart at the...
Yeah, the little chart, the data calculation.
The little chart of the Superseed. The first... That, that, yes. Big one, please. Big enough. Big enough. Big enough, please, so everybody can see.
Okay, now, committee, the existing floor space index is 144% or 1.4. Now, if you look if you look at the proposed area, it's left blank.
Zero.
Zero.
There is not...
Yeah, it's okay. Yeah, we see this, but then can we refer to the agenda? On the agenda, it's been through zoning review. I think that we base on those figures rather than on this chart. That's why I...
Yeah, but I want to pinpoint the problem that has the calculations. That was exactly why the previous...
Exactly like the original house. They use the floor space index of the original house has the floor space index final because the floor space index of the garage, it's calculated like zero. Last time, the first time, it was calculated like using the 50 meters square feet. I mean, 50 square meters, and then the total of square feet of 1.55. Now, it put zero. Now, the new floor space index is just the original. So we believe that is not calculated right.
Got it. So the applicant can respond to that after your presentation. Let's go.
Can I just give you, if properly calculated, the existing floor space index will be 144% plus 24% of the proposed garage floor index, which gives us 168 or 1.68, which will be the total floor space index. Committee, a total floor space index of 1.68 is almost two and a half times bigger than the allowed 0.69. Is this a minor variance? Absolutely no.
Especially because it's been confusing all the time.
Yes, your five minutes is up, but because I asked a question, so I'm going to give you another minute to finish your... Just tell us what the impact it is, if these figures are right.
The impact is, as I mentioned initially, the loss of sunlight to my back porch, my backyard, and also the enjoyment we have with my family in summer times. And also, this humongous garage, 13 feet high. All the pictures that the applicant has shown, the garages are eight feet tall from a foot high from the ground. I don't understand why at 13 feet high in this. That's why it's... I'm against this thing.
Okay, thank you. Yes, any question to these speakers? Yeah?
Yeah, hi. Thanks for your presentation. I just want to clarify, the house in question is immediately north of you, right? You're south-ish of it?
No, it's... I am west. I'm east of the property.
You're east of the property.
Yeah.
They both... Yeah, both facing the south, so they are the...
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks.
So I'm the only abating neighbor in there.
And you're on Gladstone, are you?
I'm in Lindsay, 21.
21 Lindsay.
Okay, oh, it's a semi. That's what I'm getting at. Okay, that's helpful. Thank you. Gotcha. Ah, I gotcha.
So their house is actually extending a little bit further than the proposed number 23. 21 is a little bit further south, yeah. Okay, any more question to this speaker?
Sorry, can I clarify that, Jim?
Yes.
So your house currently
On the east side.
Is on the east side, so but your house, the back of your house extends back into the backyard?
Yes.
Further than the current house? Okay.
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
I don't know the...
Now we'll have another wall in there, because I have a wall at the south, wall of the southwest, another wall. If this...
You added this.
13 feet garage. I don't understand why 13 feet if the neighborhood has an eight-feet garage from the ground.
Okay, yeah, please. We have another question.
Just a quick question. So your property is on the east, and then generally your property, the existing property, is longer than the subjected property, correct?
The yard goes...
Goes on the north and also on the south?
Yeah.
Okay.
But I estimate probably about 10 feet out, yeah. Okay, any more question to this speaker? Mr. Reed, you have any questions? No? Okay, just I won't forget you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, also I want to make sure that...
You have questions? You have questions?
I can compromise...
Oh, no, we are asking question. We don't have any more questions for you now. So let's let the next speakers to come up.
Through you, Madam Chair. Unless there's any speakers in the room, there's no other speakers on the registered speakers list.
Okay, so in that case, can the agent come back and also respond to those issues raised by the opposition first, and then we might have questions asked you on the application?
All right, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for coming, yeah.
Okay, on response to the neighbor's issues with the sunlight, I submitted photos. If you can please go to the photos, scroll, and I'll get you to kind of stop once we get to where we need to be. One more. Keep on going, sorry. Right there. Oh, back up one. So that is the neighbor on the east side. He's talking about, this picture was taken on March 8, 2024, at 8:48 PM. So if you look at that picture, he's got his stairs and his awning there, and it's all covered, which has zero sun. Can you go to the next photo? It's the same thing. And the next photo? See, he's blocking his own sun. How could I be blocking his sun, number one? Number two, as the sun goes down, the sun hits... So our house faces north, and the back set faces south. So as the sun is going down, the house is on Gladstone, blocked the sun before any of the garages do. So I have zero effect on blocking his sun.
Notice that the houses on Gladstone are quite close to one on the north. Yeah, you're right, yeah.
And if you can go to the next picture also, you can see... Oh, sorry, the other way? Go back, sorry. Well, there was one more picture that shows it clearly that, yeah, I guess that would be it, yeah. So that's the sun issue.
Can you keep this picture on because I have a question needed for...
Sure. And at the same time, if you look at the eastern property, it sets back quite a bit. So I will only be affecting, if not mistaken, 2.2 meters of the actual... Will be on the kind of going into his area of blocking the sun. But with all due respect, there's no sun being blocked.
I see. Thank you. Can I ask you a question on this picture? Will your new construction, now we see this structure, you're going to remove, right? The one with the little skylight? So how, compared to this one, how high the new structure will be?
Well, when we're talking about the height, I have to have it a certain height only for the fact from the house to open the door to get into the garage.
Yeah, yeah, it's fine. No, I just want to visualize it. It's fine. So it will be a little bit taller than that?
A little bit taller, yes.
Yeah, by about two feet?
Two feet, let's just say.
Okay, yeah, that's why I want to visually understand the thing, yeah. So even if it's two feet taller, then it's only just make the little opening a little bit smaller. Okay, thank you. Any question to this speaker? I mean, to the applicant?
I have a question.
Yes, please, Mr. Reed.
So I think last time, when it was rejected, one of the concerns was that there was no effort to add any soft landscaping, because it's all hardscape at the moment, which, you know, there's still no additional soft landscaping. I'm just wondering if you could address the issue of soft landscaping and drainage on the hard surface?
Well, if you look at the soft landscaping, I also showed pictures also of the front, and you see the property, that does have quite a bit of soft landscaping. But what I will suggest to, what I could do, is the driveway, it is concrete. I can remove the concrete, and I can make it where it's a porous landscape also. So I'll rip it and I can...
Would you be okay if we had a condition that the driveway be converted to porous surface?
Definitely, yes.
Yeah, permeable surface, either...
I would agree with that.
I think that will receive some support here, I'm sure.
Okay, thank you.
That's a very practical change, yeah. Any questions, please?
Yes, to you, Madam Chair. Is the driver located on the north of the property or the south?
Southwest.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, because there's a new garage coming. Just the new part will be permeable material. We're not touching the existing. We're not putting a condition for the existing, changing the existing, yeah. Okay, yeah.
No, no, we would be, because...
Sorry, yeah, I think... Sorry, Dylan.
Oh, sorry. Let's clarify this, because that's our... Yeah, Mr. Reed, please.
We're not... The driveway isn't part of the application, so we would be putting a condition to change the existing driveway to permeable, which the applicant has agreed to.
I don't... Yeah, I sort of understand, but then do we have a sort of plan showing the... Is this what we are seeing now? The 54.9 portion is a new... It's going to be a new driveway?
No, I think what the owner is offering is that he would rip up the existing driveway and replace it with permeable.
Oh, so this, but this at that same, this location?
Yes, it's at the location right there that there's access to the proposed...
Replacing the material of the existing driveway to permeable material. That sounds good. Right, thank you. All right, any more questions to this speaker, to the applicant, and then there's no more question now? We are in committee. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Dillon, I mean, I missed the read, because you were... I think we were not in the last hearing, and then that was a very, very good reminder. And now the applicant is willing to compromise on that issue.
Yeah, so I was at the last hearing, and I think that was with a key issue. Also, I would say that the applicant has given a much more detailed presentation that makes the situation and the context clear. So I think I'd be willing to support this now with the condition that the driveway be replaced with permeable pavers.
Okay, we please. Yeah, any other comment? Yeah, Mr.?
Yeah, it's not that frequent, frankly, when committee, when considering an application that was previously refused and hasn't really changed much, it's not that often where you get a different outcome. But I think in this instance, I think, as Dylan pointed out, you've done a good job of explaining it. You know, the addition of permeable pavers helps address a little bit of the soft landscaping in the rear. And I would just note that your visual presentation of the photos was helpful in terms of, I think, demonstrating that the impact on the next-door neighbor in terms of light would be minimal at best. I don't think that there really is a dramatic increase in shading, particularly given the infrastructure that's in your neighbor's backyard. So I think your presentation today was helpful in us understanding a little bit better what your application is and what you're proposing to do. So I, like Dylan, I agree. I think this is a supportable application.
Yes, I agree, too, and I also would like to comment, the last part of the comment. To me, it's very good photograph you're taking. And also with all the contest, south of the both property, those houses are quite tall. So on the south side, the sunlight will be compromised anyway, not by your property, but by the property on the south. So those are very good photographs, by the way. Thank you. So do we have a motion on the floor or comments?
I'd be like...
Mr. Clay. Oh, okay, Mr. Reed, yeah.
Does someone else want to make a comment?
No, no, we like to have a motion from you, yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve these variances with the condition that the driveway would be replaced with permeable pavers.
Okay, and when, second, Mr. Clay, all in favor with that condition? unanimously approved. Yeah. Oh, oh, you're... Sorry, you got your hand off. Okay. Ms. West, dissent. Can you tell us why, please? Oh, okay, you don't have to. Okay, so it's 4-1 approved. Thank you, yeah.
Here, please.
Okay, the next item is number... It's number two... No, it's number four. It's 110, 112, 14, and 16 Avenue Road. This is to alter the development standards, which is for a 12-story mixed-use by increasing the number of stories from nine to 12, and also the overall building height, gross floor area, and also modify the envelope that the setbacks and the encroachments and to reduce the maintenance space. and to reduce the amenity space to the minimum required parking spaces, too. There will be 274 residential units on this property. And we also received. Let me see, number four. We received a survey, site plan, floor plan and elevations, three photographs of the property and also cover letter from the agent. And we received a decision affecting the property and ours report and summary of revision so they, to, from stormwater management and heritage memo, also a shadow study, transportation, a dendum letter and also a dendum to pedestrian level wind study and a presentation from the agent and the site-specific bylaw for this property. And we also received correspondence from community planning, transportation engineering and also staff reports from development, community planning and also from heritage. We have received a letter of concern or interest from the Annex Residence Association. And for this, they asking for three, six variances. Let's have the agent, he's in person. Thank, welcome.
Through you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to state that we've made multiple attempts to reach the speaker-registered in interest, Shannon Woods at 20 Tranby Avenue, but we've been unable to reach them. We have the speaker here, the registered speaker, the agent in person.
Yes, okay. I think since you still, I mean, we cannot connect with them, but then it seems that they are in opposition. Will you give us a very quick, a brief presentation?
Yes, happy to do so, Madam Chair. And good morning. My name is Max Laskin. I'm from Goodman's LLP, counsel to the applicant. Our address is 333 Bay Street, Toronto, Ontario.
Yes.
If the committee could pull up the presentation materials dated February 10th, that would assist. This application seeks to modify an existing approval for a nine-story mid-rise building to add three additional stories. It's, the building is in the area of Avenue Road in Davenport and those three additional stories would facilitate 19 additional homes on lands designated in mixed-use areas within a major transit station area in a manner that fits well within the existing context and provides new housing exactly where policy directs it to go. At the outset, Madam Chair, as you noted, there's a report from planning staff, heritage staff and transportation staff, all confirming no objection. And in addition, Madam Chair, the letter from the local residents association, the Annex Residence Association, as you'll see, actually confirms that they have no objection to the proposal on account of the extensive community consultation that our client has engaged in as well as the public realm improvements that I'll mention briefly.
Okay.
As you can see on the slide, the site is located on the west side of Avenue Road just south of Davenport. The overall context is one of mid-rise buildings along avenue punctuated with tall buildings at the north and the south ends. And if you move to slide four, you'll see the transit context, which shows bus stops one block away from the site in either direction and three transit stations within close proximity and two within 500 meters of the site. The site also has the benefit of the Avenue Road dedicated cycle track directly on its doorstep. Under the official, sorry, the site today, if you go to the next slide, has an existing heritage building at the corner and is otherwise vacant except for some inter-mactivations that our client has put together for the community. On the screen now is the official plan maps. The site is designated in mixed-use areas and is also within mixed-use areas three under the downtown plan, which permits both mid-rise and tall buildings and the associated policies direct the highest density of development to mixed-use areas in proximity to transit, which is exactly this site. The site is also within a council-adopted PMTSA, which is shown on the next slide, where intensification is promoted to support efficient use of transit. If you move to the next slide, you'll see a brief timeline which shows that the existing approval was granted by council in July of 2022. I paused to note that this is not an approval that involved an OLT hearing or a settlement. It was simply an approval by council. Since that approval, a number of things have changed, as you will have heard in other matters, including the pledge to create 285,000 new homes, the new PPS and the new council-adopted mid-rise guidelines to inform the design of mid-rise buildings. If you move to the next slide, you'll see the existing, sorry, one slide further, you'll see the existing approval. And then there's the, the next slide shows the proposal at 12 stories. The overall approach is to maintain the built form as previously proposed with three additional stories, allowing for 19 additional units. And if you move to the next slide, you'll see that there's one additional story in the lower portion of the building and two in the upper portion of the building. Importantly as well, Madam Chair, there's a five-and-a-half meter setback added to the north portion of the building that you'll see noted there, which was requested by city staff to provide for transition to the building to the north.
Okay.
If you move to the next slide, the proposed increase in height results in variances for height density and corresponding modifications to setback in balcony diagrams. The next slide shows the existing height on the west side of Avenue Road at the time that the existing approval was granted by council. As you can see, at that time, this building was relatively unique in the context. If you move to the next slide, you'll see that the context has now changed on the west side of Avenue Road. Council has approved a 16-story building at the corner on the block to the north and there's an 11-story proposal on that block as well. If you move to the next slide, you'll see layered on the context on the east side of Avenue Road. And the overall picture that emerges, Madam Chair, is very much one of a mid-rise character and this proposal very much fits within that character. I note that planning staff have advised in their report that the proposed height enassing are appropriate for the site and fit within the planned context and conform with official plan policies. Madam Chair, the remaining variances are technical in nature and so I won't go through them, though I'm happy to answer any questions. I did want to make specific note of the public realm improvements on the property because I know they're important to the ARA. The Avenue Road in its existing condition is very narrow. It's 1.7 meters. The proposal involves an increase of that to 2.1 meters and there's an additional setback that allows an overall pedestrian area of 4.6 meters on Avenue Road. Lastly, Madam Chair, I do want to speak to conditions of approval. There's one condition of approval with respect to large caliper trees that our client has agreed to plant on the northwestern portion of the site in discussions with the local community. And that condition is expressed in a letter from MEP Design. We support that condition. There's a second condition, Madam Chair, recommended by heritage staff, which our client does not support and I'll mention it briefly in my time remaining. The reason our client doesn't support that condition is because our client has already obtained the heritage approval that that condition recommends. It already has a heritage agreement on title with the property, has already obtained the approval and permits required. And so that condition is simply redundant. And Madam Chair, we do not support going through that process again if that's what the condition suggests because, again, our client already has gone through that process and obtained the permit and there's no reason to delay the 74 homes proposed on this property, Madam Chair.
Yeah, I see what you mean here because maybe they just forgot that you already got the approval. I don't know, okay. I was also reading the, any question to the speaker? Yeah, Mr. Clay, I have one.
Thanks, Chair. First off, you know, additional density in this area is obviously a desirable thing. It's, as you point out, it's got all the amenities and connectivity to a variety of different transit options. I wanted to ask a couple of questions. First of all, you're reducing the height of the ground floor. So are you still having ground floor retail or commercial?
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you for the question. There is ground floor retail and the only reason that there's a variance for the first story height is because of the existing heritage building that's being conserved. So that 2.6 meters that's requested is simply the existing first story height of that building and that was simply not picked up in the site-specific bylaw process that was.
Okay. Secondly, you reduce a fairly significant reduction in amenity space. Maybe you could just speak to us about that?
Yes, thank you, Miss, thank you. So the reduction in outdoor amenity space results directly from the requested north setback that city staff had requested. On the top of the building previously, there was a slightly larger outdoor amenity space as a consequence of providing the five-and-a-half meter setback that has been requested by staff. The space on the roof for outdoor amenities is more limited. And so that's the reason for the reduction in outdoor amenity. And I'll note, Mr. Clay, that the area has quite a number of amenities. You'll probably be familiar with Ramsden Park, which is just to the north, a very large park. There's a smaller parquet, just one block south, called Boswell Parquet. And so in the context of those things, and one other thing which I should mention, which is that this building has a large number of large units. 65% of the units are two and three-bedroom units and the three-bedroom units, on average, are close to 1,500 square feet.
Right.
Very large units, sir, and large units like that generally generate less need for amenity space because there's more space interior to the unit. And so in light of all of those factors, city staff were prepared to support this proposal with the reduced amenity.
Great, that's very helpful and, you know, Yorkville in itself provides a certain amount of amenity space. And you've answered the third question I have, which was the mix, right? So your mix is consistent with what your previous approval with the additional units?
It's actually, sir, it has more two and three-bedroom units than our previous one.
That's good, that's good to hear.
So it is an increase in larger unit sizes as a consequence of the proposal.
Perfect, okay, great, thank you.
Yes, I'd like to just correct my earlier comment about the association's letter. When I reviewed it, actually at the end, they do not have any opposition.
Correct.
It seemed that you have been working with them very closely throughout the process.
Absolutely, Madam Chair. Our clients met with them over five times and it's been a very collaborative process.
Yeah, okay, more questions?
Yeah, thank you. So I want to commend you on your public engagement with the residents association and the neighbors. What was the opinion or suggestions of the neighbors and neighborhood and how was that reflected in your design?
Thank you for the question. So the concerns primarily related to public realm. And so I mentioned how the proposal dramatically improves the public realm condition on Avenue Road. In addition, there were comments with respect to the relationship between the project and the western portion of the site, which is where there are existing single-family homes. And there, as I've mentioned, our client has agreed to plant very large caliper trees on that portion of the site to provide additional privacy and buffering to that portion. And then the last thing I would mention is that there were some concerns raised with respect to street parking and how this proposal might affect street parking. And in that regard, I note that, I note a couple of things. Number one, at the end of the day, as you can see, the community understood that this proposal does meet the requirements in the bylaw with respect to visitor parking and so there's no deficiency there. Number two, there is no on-street parking permitted on Tranby Avenue. And number three, in terms of overall parking supply, the base bylaw here would require zero parking at all and our client is providing much more than that at 53 spaces overall. And so in light of all of those things, as you can see, there's no opposition from the community there with respect to parking.
Yep, thank you. This was the best letter in opposition I've ever seen. So, thank you.
Any more, Mr. Reed, you have a question, yes?
Yeah, can you, why is the bicycle parking being pushed to the second level when there's a parking level on the first level?
Yes, thank you for the question. So as part of the proposal, there is additional bike parking provided here relative to the previous proposal. There's now 74 spaces. And in designing the two levels, P1 and P2, in light of the other constraints with respect to mechanical space and so on, it was determined that the best spaces were those that are being highlighted there for bike parking. There's other spaces in that space as well. And Mr. Reed, there's, I'll note that it's not that P2 is the only space that has long-term bike parking. There's also about 15 spaces on P1. And in the overall design of the building in consultation with staff, it was determined that the best way to accommodate bike parking while also accommodating accessible parking spaces and mechanical spaces was to locate it in those positions shown.
Okay. And just a, am I correct that there's a small reduction in the indoor amenity space from the previous plans?
That's correct. It's a small reduction of about four square meters. That indoor amenity space is still in the same location on the third level. And in the presentation materials, there's a conceptual design shown of that space that the size of that space was reduced slightly just to accommodate the layout of the additional units.
Okay.
Any more questions? Yes, no more question. But I, can you, you mentioned there were two conditions, which was the heritage one, I remember, but I don't remember the first one.
Yes, thank you.[1465.93] Yes, thank you.
Repeat it so that we all get it?
Absolutely. There's a letter on file from MEP Design.
MEP?
MEP, which is our client's landscape architect. And that letter includes language of the requested condition that secures those large caliper trees that I mentioned, Madam Chair.
Okay.
And if you just go down, yeah, it's right there at the bottom in sort of italics.
Okay.
That's it right there.
So you will honor this recommendation, but it's not, because we usually do not impose a third-party recommendation as conditions unless it's like, is to also agree up by Urban Forestry Department.
Understood, Madam Chair. Our client is prepared to comply with this condition based on its engagement with the Annex Residents Association. We'll leave it to you if you determine that it's not appropriate.
Yes, I will, I will, we will put it as a footnote.
Would you be okay with it? Would you want us to tie the approval of the site plan, which actually reflects the trees?
So that is challenging, Mr. Clay, only because we have not finalized the site plan approval process, and there could be tweaks associated with engagement with city staff. So I wouldn't want to tie the approval.
We can also specifically say, tie to the site plan only for the three...
Only as it relates to those trees in the northwest corner?
Yes.
If you're okay with that, that might be, that might be the easiest way to satisfy the ratepayers?
Yep, I think that, I think that works, Mr. Clay.
Yep.
Yeah, all right. So, yeah, that's clear. I think that is better.
Thank you for the suggestion.
We will not bind the city with the third-party recommendation. Okay, thank you. Any more questions? Otherwise, I'd like to see whether we have a motion on the floor. Yeah.
Yeah, sure, Chair. I'm happy to move a motion. First of all, thank you for the presentation. I thought it was excellent. It was very helpful. And you answered all our questions, I think, quite well. I think this is a very desirable application. It introduces, as we've all agreed, introduces additional density into an area that can certainly accommodate it, and it's well, could be well-received. I'd be happy to move approval of this application, subject to tying it to site plan with respect to the trees. Is there a quadrant associated with that, or?
Three.
It's in the northwest corner of the site?
Northwest corner of the site, okay. Tie it to the site plan with respect to the trees in the northwest corner of the site. I'm inclined to agree with the applicant that they've already cleared the heritage condition. So rather than delay this application further, I suspect if there is an issue with heritage, they will certainly be out to chat with you. But I don't think we need to attach those conditions.
They do, they can override if they miss something, I guess, yeah.
So I'll move approval with that one condition.
Okay. Anyone like a second? Mr. Business, second? And all in favor? All in favor, unanimously approved. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
And I also like to comment about the work they have done on the heritage. I think that this is a way much, they've done a lot more on the heritage part than a lot of projects we've seen recently. Thank you very much.
Madam Chair.
Yeah, bye-bye. So the next item is item number five, 822 Ossington Avenue. This is to order the existing one-story osserial building, which is a garage, in the rear yard of the existing two-and-a-half-story detached housing, which is a triplex, by constructing a complete second-floor addition, and also, a second addition to the osserial building, I guess. It's going to be one laneway suite on the second floor, and also a parking space on the ground floor. There will be four residential dwellings on this lot, and three in the main house, and one in the osserial building. We also received a survey site plan for plans elevations, three photographs of the property. We received email corresponding from transportation engineering, and also one support letter from 155 Lisker Street. And we, let's see, they are seeking three variances. We are ready for the agent or applicant.
Through you, Madam Chair. We have the agent on the line, and one registered speaker in interest also online.
Yeah. So he will be, the person in interest will be speaking, right? Yeah, okay.
Good morning, Madam Chair and committee members. My name is Michael Cruz. I'm the principal at Tac Design here in Toronto. We're at 660R College Street. We believe that this application is truly minor in nature. The minor variances really have to do with the existing building and its current configuration. The addition of the residential suite above in itself, that suite itself is not subject to any of these variances. And so, again, the, be it the required setbacks or open areas and such are truly a result of what the current configuration is and placement of the existing garage. The one area of providing open landscape at the front of the garage, meaning on the laneway side, is very difficult to do in that, you know, the garage will be, continue to be used as a single-car garage below the residential suite. So with that, we do trust that the committee will look upon this application favorably.
Okay, thank you. We have one more speaker in opposition. Let's hold our question to the applicant, and we'll get back to you later. So let's have the other speakers now. Okay.
Anna-Lisa, you've been unmuted.
Good morning, Madam Chair and committee. My name is Anna-Lisa Fraga. My address is 482 Vaughan Mills Road. I'm here as an owner of the property, so I don't have any opposition to anything. I'm just hoping that the variances get approved and we can move forward.
Oh, you're in support?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. We thought that you were in opposition. Okay, thank you. Any more comment you want to add?
No other comments, no.
Okay, thank you. So let's have the applicant back. Do we have questions for the applicant?
Chair, just a real quick one. I mean, this is pretty close to as of right, and you're building on the existing footprint, which is great. You're a little light on the rear yard landscaping, and you've got a bit of concrete back there. Is there any chance you, are you, are you planning to lift any of that concrete?
At the moment, no. If we please the committee, we can make some adjustments to alleviate that or make that more favorable.
Yeah, I mean, if you're, I guess the question is, if you're already doing construction back there, it's probably not hard just to, like, there's a strip of concrete right in front of your proposed, or the current garage. And if you, I think if you were even just to lift that, you'd probably meet the 85%.
I believe we could, you know, take that as a condition of approval.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, do you, doesn't mean that, Mr. Clay, doesn't mean that we delete? Variance one?
Well, again, that's, that is a good question. If you were to pull that, would, do you think you'd meet the 85%?
I think we're very close. We're really only 7% under.
Yeah.
You know, if it really came, like, we are so close, I would, I would like to think that if we did remove that portion of the concrete, even though we might be 2% under, I think we're still very, you know, like, so close to being compliant, as opposed to, let's say, having to dig up and remove the existing path that is there in addition to that.
So maybe we'll keep the variance and just have a condition to pull it.
Or just, or keep the condition and then maybe to 80%?
I'm agnostic about changing.
Oh, just keep it as it is?
I think you just keep it as it is, because we don't have the number, and it'd be difficult for him to calculate that. So my suggestion would be, let's just keep the variance, but have a condition that that concrete pathway or that strip of concrete be...
Be reduced?
Yeah, be removed.
Be removed.
One that's directly in front of the garage.
The entire?
I think part of it is, access is the entrance to the garage, so we can't take all of it out.
Yeah, I'm just saying, you take that strip, that strip that looks like it's in front of the garage, if you just remove that and replace it with...
Part of that is access to the door to the garage.
Yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't touch the walkway, right? Leave the walkway intact.
Yeah, there's two, but part of that strip, so there's two different entrances. The walkway goes to the entrance to the suite, and then part of the strip was the entrance to the garage.
Yeah, so also, there's no diagram to indicate that...
Look at SK 1.1. But we could, they could remove part of that strip.
Yeah, I think...
They could remove the northern part, so.
But it's hard to, Mr. Clay, it's really hard to really enforce it, only because there's no dimensions even on this diagram, right? So you say that you're going to strip a little bit. You do not know by how much. I'm not too sure how we can...
Well, the other option, Chair, would be to replace that portion with permeable pavers.
Oh, the garage, just the double door?
That strip of land along there with permeable. Maybe that would be a good alternative. As Dylan points out, there is, there is swing doors there, French doors. So if you, if you replace that concrete strip with permeable, that might satisfy, you know, the egress issue with the garage.
Yeah, and then keep the concrete path as it is.
Yeah, and just that strip in front of the garage be replaced and made permeable.
So Starfish is trying to show the red one.
Yeah, that's exactly it. Yeah, that would be what I would suggest, that that area, thank you guys, that area would be permeable pavers.
Okay. This is on the east side, yeah, east side of the garage door. Okay. All right. We can, we can, we can put that...
Yeah, I think that's probably, that works fine.
All right. So any other question to the applicant? Otherwise, we're in committee now. Okay.
Sure, Chair, I'm happy to, I think overall, as I mentioned, this is, this is pretty close to as of right. It's a very minor application. It's building a suite over the existing garage. I think it's quite supportable, particularly given its location on Ossington. And so I'm happy to move approval of this application, subject to the condition that the highlighted portion by staff of the, of the concrete strip in front of the proposed laneway suite be constructed out of permeable pavers.
Yeah. Anyone, one second?
I'll second.
Mr. Reed, second, and then all in favor with that conditions? Yeah, unanimously approved. Thank you. So next item is number six, 462 Wellington Street, Street West. This is to order the development standards for the 15-story mixed-use building, and it's under site-specific bylaw by increasing the overall height, number of dwelling units, and also the residential growth floor area. We have received a survey site plan for plan elevations, a cover letter from the agent, Albert's report, and also a memo from the Land Development Company, and a transportation report, and we received comment from Metro Links. And they, let's see, they are seeking four variances. Let's have, we are ready for the agent to come.
Through you, Madam Chair. We have an agent online, and there are no registered speakers.
Yes.
You have been unmuted.
Yes. So they also do not have any opposition, so I'm going to see whether the panel require a presentation, or they would like to have a presentation. No?
I just have a quick question. No. I have a quick question, but no need for a presentation.
Yeah, we will have questions, but yeah, let's have the agent now, yeah.
Hello, my name is Inger Squires. Address 197 Spadina Avenue, Suite 600. Good morning, Madam Chair and committee members. I'm a principal and planner at Urban Strategies, Inc. I'm here on behalf of our client, 462 Wellington, Inc. The owner is of 462 Wellington. We respectfully ask the variances before you be deferred today. We did request through our planning technician on February 3 to defer the application. Fortunately, the zoning notice that was circulated to the public in this committee was missing three of our requested variances, and it had one variance that was not required. We've been proactively working with our zoning examiner and our planning technician to prepare a new zoning notice, which has actually already been circulated, that accounts for the six variances that we did request. And we're looking to reschedule our hearing for early March, when there's a space on the agenda.
Oh, I see. So this is not correct. What we, in front of us is only four variances, right?
Unfortunately, so, yes. And the first three are the variances, the first three variances that we requested, but the fourth is not required. And then there's three others that are missing.
Understand. So we do need a presentation from you then, yeah, because we did not know that we're not going to hear this case. All right, so you're requesting a deferral now, right?
Yes.
Do we have any speakers on this item for deferral? No, right?
No, we don't.
We only knew about it now. Okay. So it seems that it's premature to hear it today. So should we have a motion?
I'll move a motion to defer, Chair.
Yeah, all right. So, second, please, yeah. Ms. West, second, for the reason that there's some missing variances. All in favor for the deferral? All in, all in favor is deferred. Thank you for coming. All right, thank you. So we move to the next item is item number seven, 145 King Street West. This is to order the existing 27-story mixed-use building by constructing the commercial space on the ground floor to accommodate a large, a larger fundage along University for the financial institute, which is a bank, and to accommodate a second eating establishment along King Street West. The total growth floor area of the financial institute will be maintained, and the, and the existing commercial space on University Avenue will be removed. We receive a copy of survey site plan for plan elevation, fourteen photographs of the property, and cover letter from the agent. There's a decision affecting the subject property and a tree protection plan, and presentation material from the agent. And they are seeking three variances. Let's have the agent brought up then. Thank you, yeah.
Through you, Madam Chair. We have the agent here in person and no registered speakers.
Welcome. Sorry, I was so focused in reading the material. So welcome. Yeah, we'd like to get a presentation? No? Do we have questions?
I don't have any questions. I mean, it's great. Thank you for coming down.
So since you're in person, maybe just give us now a five-minute, maybe, maybe a two-minute presentation, just give a nutshell of what you're doing, so, yeah.
Absolutely. Good morning, members of committee and Madam Chair. My name is Grant Mason. I'm a planner with Urban Strategies. Been retained as an agent for Quadriol, who are the owners of the site. I'm also joined by Chris Ho online, who represents Quadriol, and Carmen Rotunda is our architect, who's also available online for any questions. These variances are technical in nature, required in order to support the relocation of Scotiabank and the introduction of the new eating establishment along King Street. We worked with staff to develop the variances and had support from staff before the application. We want to thank them for their help on this application, for their ongoing support with helping us develop the variances. And I'm happy to answer any questions. Generally, the application relates to technical matters for retail streets, policies and regulations under both bylaws, and they are discussed with staff and are required as written.
I'm just curious about the tree protection plan. Is it like, those trees are already there, but then you just promise not to damage them, right?
That's correct. We submitted this just to demonstrate that we recognize there's trees on the site, and there will be no changes to any of the trees.
Okay. Yeah, that's, I thought this kind of strange that your warranty say that I'm not going to damage the trees. Okay, that's good. Thank you. Any come, any questions? No? So we're in committee now. All right. So I think this is quite a straightforward application, although, I mean, given the locations, it's only just switching the functions of the ground floor. There's no, I don't...
Frankly, it's good to see that their, the proposal will increase the animation on King Street.
Yeah, that's right. I think that is appropriate.
That's always good to see.
So we have a motion? Mr. Reed?
Sure, I can make a motion. The, the presentation materials that they provided were really helpful, and I think very clear in showing this is, you know, basically a technical, some technical things based on the existing configuration of the building. And so, and as Larry said, it's going to add some animation to King Street. So I'm happy to move a motion to approve these proposals.
Second, Mr. Clay, second. All in favor of approval? Unanimously approved. Thank you for coming, yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Item number eight is 29 Grenadier Heights. This is to order the existing two-story detached dwelling by constructing second and fifth-floor story addition. We receive a copy survey site plan for plans elevations, three photographs of the property, and a decision affecting the subject property. We have staff report from Urban Forestry and also from within Natural Protection, Feature Protection Unit. And we also receive another staff report from Urban Forestry. And they, they are asking for only one variance. Oh, yes. We're ready for the agent.
Through you, Madam Chair. We have the agent online and one registered speaker in person.
Okay.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, very well.
Hi, this is Danielle Sturgis from Sustained Design Architects. Our address is 1724 Queen Street West, and I'm speaking for the owner of 29 Grenadier Heights.
Yes.
So our requested variance, oh, sorry.
Sorry, sorry. I just said that this seemed to be a very straightforward application. I just want to check the panel whether we even...
Is someone registered, is someone speaking on it?
Do, yeah, do we have any other speakers?
Through you, Madam Chair. We have one registered speaker in opposition in person.
Oh, in person. So you do have opposition. So please, go ahead with your five-minute presentation, yeah.
Sure. So our requested variance is to widen a permitted roof dormer at the back of the house to have more usable space at the third floor. So the main wall height variance that we're asking for is triggered to the width of the new rear dormer. So 40% of the width of the house is permitted by right for the dormer, and we're asking for another 20% width, which means that the main wall height measurement is taken to the top of the dormer, rather than to the top of the second-floor wall below.
I see.
Yeah, so the house and walls will not be any higher than by right, but the rear facade will have a wider dormer facing the backyard. So we believe this variance is minor in size and impact, and adds desirable interior space to the current home, and respects the surrounding neighborhood and adjacent properties. The rear dormer is not visible from the street or the front yard. The dormer roof is no higher than the existing pitched roof. It's hidden from the street and the front yard. And the dormer wall is set back 2.3 meters from the edge of the approved roof eve below, and will have negligible impact on shadowing the neighborhood, neighboring backyard. There was also a letter of concern submitted from the Ratepayers Association, and it noted that TRCA should have to weigh in on the variance, and that any previous variances on the property should have to be revisited as part of this review. So we've already worked with the TRCA and Urban Forestry and Ravine and Natural Features, and we received their approvals that included the larger dormer in that design. And the current variance, we think, is the only one that should be considered today. But I'll note that nine out of 10 of the minor variances that were approved under the previous owners of the property in 2016 previous owners of the property in 2020, I think it was, they were due to the existing house massing on the property, which were all legal non-conforming issues. And only the 10th variance out of 10 on that one was to allow for a front yard parking space, which we're not actually going to use in this new design. We're parking within the garage that's existing. So those variances are kind of moot. So, yeah, I guess I'm open to hearing the objection. We circulated letters, we dropped them off by hand to all of the neighboring properties asking if anybody had concerns, and nobody reached out to us by email or phone. So I'd love to hear the objections so that we can work with them. Thanks.
I just have a quick question. The dormer you mentioned, which is now kind of by 60% of the length, right, or the width of the wall, is it on the east, on the east side?
East. Yes, east facing, facing the ravine, yeah.
Yeah, that's the, yeah, the east elevation, okay.
Chair, can I ask just a clarification? Just, so is this a new application or is this an application that builds on the previous approvals? You mentioned that were, there is approvals that were granted in 2020.
Yes, there were approvals in 2020, and so we worked, yeah, with the previous owners of the property, and then they ended up selling the home to the owner we're working with now. So we worked within all of those parameters that they had received. And it was only when we went for a building permit that this larger dormer was flagged as needing a variance, even though their design under the previous architect had the larger dormer, and I guess it wasn't caught in that previous, in those previous minor variances. So this does, I guess, build upon those variances.
Great, so it's more or less the same proposal that was previously approved. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, the question about the dormer, so you said that it's actually pulled back from the roof, the eve line, it's from the east, but what about from the, from the north? Is it like straight up on the north?
It, yes, so the wall is set back a little bit from the roof overhang on the north. You'll see if you go up to the third floor plan.
Yeah, it's a little bit moved back.
It's slightly, but it's, it's in line with the wall below.
Yes. Okay, thank you. All right, so maybe we hold our questions and listen to the, yeah, we have opposition here. Welcome. Tell us your name and address, please, yeah.
Good morning, committee and Chair.
Yes.
Nicholas Singh, Swansea Rate Payers. I do have a preliminary matter. I understand that the committee has a new policy regarding submissions and has applied them without notice to the public. I believe that this action was improper. So regarding my submission, I understand that the applicant has seen it, so it was posted on the website. But my submission was available, you know, on there. My question is then, has the committee had a chance to read our submission?
I do not have the notes even from the supplemental material, is it? Or none?
Can we ask Sabrina?
So it is there? Yeah?
You are from the Rate Payers?
I see it on the screen there, so I assume it is in the file.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
But I didn't get a yes from the committee, so I'll review that a bit. The applicant did talk about our concern about the TRCA involvement. We understand that they were involved in the previous application, and there were several, three, I believe, variances that required their involvement. To date, we have not seen any involvement of the TRCA in this application, and because the variance requires change to the rear wall, it is possible that this is of concern to the TRCA, and we suggested approval of the TRCA should be required before approval is granted. If the committee prefers to approve the application, a condition requiring approval of the TRCA should be considered?
Yeah, we will let the applicant respond to that, whether they have done already, working with TRCA, okay?
Okay, sure. So regarding the 10 variances granted, previously granted, the current application, as you know, adds the rear main wall to the list of variances. Since the committee did not tie the approvals appears to the plans that were before the committee in 2021, we seem to have a situation where we have new plans, where the applicant is stacking this variance on top of the previous approvals. So I suspect that we do have new plans before us, which utilizes many of those previous variances plus the new one in a new design. So we now have, for example, an integral garage, which makes the front parking variances from the 2021 case redundant. As such, approvals for the parking should be voided. So in cases where there are new plans, I suggest that the previous approvals should be voided and the new proposal and all of the necessary variances should be before the committee for consideration, and they should be also part of the public notice. So I'm correct about that? That would mean there are really four variances that we're looking at affecting the building envelope, two building setbacks, the main wall heights for the rear wall and for both sidewalls and the FSI. Together, these variances create a very large building that does not meet the test for being minor. I've often heard the committee members say that a variance is small, therefore minor. When looking at the FSI, going from 0.35 to 1.64, it appears on the face of it that this is not minor, over four times the allowed limit. The zoning in Swansea goes from 0.3 to 0.6, to 1.0, and then to 2. And the 2 is reserved for the apartment zones. So this property has been rezoned as an apartment zone. This in itself is not minor or in keeping with the intent and purpose of the bylaw.
Excuse me, sir. Excuse me, sir.
Yes.
I know if you're going to continue citing the previous variances and in the previous proof application, I'm afraid this committee cannot address that. Can you please focus on the one variance in front of us? Then we can discuss the pertinent information if necessary, but we really cannot revisit some variances that have been approved and it was not appealed. And I guess that you will have taken a very active part when it was being, being heard at that time, right? So this committee cannot revisit those approved variances. I'm sorry. So can we focus on this application?
Fine. My comments were that they should be before the, before the committee as an entire application because you add, and you're stacking this variance on top of the previous ones, you also have previous ones which no longer apply. So we have this new set of plans for this property, and we are not looking at...
Maybe we can get our Deputy Secretary Chancellor to comment on this before we go any further?
Through you, Madam Chair. We want to hear the merits of this application and the variance that is before the committee today.
Hi, if I, this is Danielle Sturgis speaking, but I can also mention we already have a building permit with...
Through you, Madam Chair.
Yes.
We should finish hearing from Mr. Singh first, and then we could hear from the applicant as a rebuttal.
Yes, you hear our Deputy Secretary's instructions. So let's focus on this application, then we would like to hear from you. Thank you. Yeah, let's continue, yeah.
Okay, moving on. So turning to the applicant's submission for this application, there is no mention of anything that would support a claim that this application passes the test for the official plan and in particular Policy 4.1.5, which requires an examination of the immediate and broader contexts. As you know, I've been before this tribunal many times and submitted detailed discussions of official plan, Policy 4.1.5, and the immediate broader and immediate contexts. However, both my submissions and evidence that I have put before the committee for the last two years have been largely ignored, and there has never been an explanation as to how this is possible when Section 45, under which this tribunal is constituted, requires you to apply the test for maintaining the intent and purpose of the official plan. Given that you are required to provide your reasonings for your decisions and given that there is a case that accepts your comments during your in-camera discussions in place of the written reasons, I'm asking that during your in-camera deliberations that you make plain for the public why Policy 4.1.5 is not being applied to the test for maintaining the intent and purpose of the official plan.
Thank you.
Now, unless, I have a question for the applicant. The question is...
No, I'm so sorry. This time, if you're making, if you finish your presentation, we will move on to, the applicant will respond to your question.
I believe I have a right to ask a question.
Yes, yes, yeah. Okay, I give you an extra minute to do that. Okay, thank you.
The question is, and I'd ask you to put this to the applicant, why did you not provide a presentation showing numerical data according to the official plan, Policy 4.1.5, that shows that the proposal satisfies the requirements of the policy that development in a neighborhood must respect and reinforce the character of the neighborhood?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Let's have the, yeah, you finished, right? Thank you. Let's have the applicant to respond to questions raised by this speaker.
Hi, so we do have a building permit for the house without the widened dormer at the backyard, and it is under construction, so...
No, he has asked us very specific questions about...
Yeah, I just, he mentioned all the other previous variances that need to be, that he'd like to be reconsidered, but those have been approved for construction, and they, they took into account, it was due to the existing massing of the early 1900s house, that you have the walls at the sides and the roof height and the setbacks. We haven't, and the front setback in the north and the south setback, those were primarily the variances that were being asked for, nine out of 10 at the time. So the one we're asking for today is for the rear dormer and making it 20% wider than what's permitted, which doesn't affect the streetscape, maintains the look of the house from the front, maintains the height of the house from the front, and it's only when you're down in the ravine or across the pond that you actually see this dormer as somebody from the public. And it's pulled back from the, from the east roof overhang, so it doesn't shade the backyard to the north as much. It would shade the house to the north slightly more, but we consider that minor, there's no windows in that section of the house to the north. Yeah, so I guess, let me know if there's any other, and also the TRCA comment. So the TRCA, we went through approvals with TRCA, with Urban Forestry, with Ravine and Natural Features, showing this dormer, showing this wider dormer, and it was, they all approved it, so they know the massing of the building as it sits in the ravine. It was only when we applied for building permit that this minor variance was flagged as an issue. So we reduced the dormer for the building permit, and now we're going for a permit revision, including this minor variance, to get the wider dormer, but the home is already under construction.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
All right. So, yeah, we have comment from the, from Urban Forestry, which is advisory comment. We do have it on record, yeah. Okay, any question to the applicant? No, we don't have any more question to you, and we are in committee now. Yep. Mr. Clay, yeah?
Sure, I'm happy to take this one. I, I think what is before us is, is quite minor. It is just an application to deal with the dormer out the third story. This is a pretty prestige lot. It's a large lot, and there has been a series of variances that were previously approved. I think incrementally, this is a very minor application and is quite supportable and would bring this, I think this house and this proposal is quite consistent with the structures in and around on this street and around this part of Swansea. So I think it's quite supportable. Unless anyone has any other comments, I'm happy to move approval of this application. There is no conditions, there is the forestry advisory, but I'm sure the applicant is aware of that.
Okay. Ms. West, second? Okay. Oh, in favor with no conditions? Mr., oh, yeah.
Yes, sir.
Approved unanimously, yeah. Oh, you want? Yeah, okay. We're going to take a five-minute break now.
Can we do a 10 minutes? Can we get 10 minutes so I can go downstairs?
10 minutes.
Oh, 10 minutes? I didn't hear that. Okay, it's a 10-minute break, sorry. Yeah, okay. Okay, we have to turn this off.
Push your red button in front of you?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. There you go. Yes, I am the owner and agent of Seven Armidale.
We do have some opposition like to speak later, so, yeah, we'd like to give us a five-minute presentation, thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Committee. My name is Robert Cristolo, I am the owner and agent of Seven Armidale Avenue. Caterina and I have lived, worked, and volunteered in this neighborhood for over 20 years. Along with our two teenage sons, we are invested wholeheartedly in the Swansea High Park neighborhood, and for the long run, as friends, neighborhoods, and caring watchdogs. In 2021, we underwent the challenging and costly renovation that preserved the historic charm and architecture of our home. We can refer to those pictures we included. While incorporating modern comforts, all I may add, that we're built as of right. The final phase is to complete our backyard. This plan has been thoughtfully conceptualized, and we're convinced it maintains the general intent of the bylaw and Toronto's official plan. It is appropriate for the scale and fit for a rapidly redeveloping area where intensification and compact urban forms are priorities. Specifically, on lands designated neighborhoods in Toronto's official plan. Variance one relates to required soft landscaping in our rear yard. To better grasp our situation, it's imperative to understand the site context. All components of our plan, ancillary structure, parking deck, stairs, and hot tub are efficiently and functionally accommodated for despite size and lot constraints. We firmly believe the concessions for soft scape we have made are more than adequate and help demonstrate a proper fit for the development while maintaining the general intent of the bylaw and official plan. In our meeting with community planning prior to this hearing, we explained in depth the measures we have taken to address this variance, and in our view, rendering it minor. This is what we shared. Many costly and thoughtful concessions included, incorporating a total of approximately 500 square feet of permeable sink in a basin-like containment of four to six inches in depth under the entirety of our deck to capture runoff and ease water-related issues, all done in permeable material. We are installing grills or slats around the perimeter of the bottom deck steps facing that will expose the basin in order to facilitate proper drainage. We are even open to exposing the basin entirely if the committee wishes to make this a condition of approval. We added, in addition, approximately 250 square feet, again, this can be seen in the pictures we submitted, 250 square feet combined, 75 square feet to the west of us, and 175 square feet to the east portions of the property beyond our back gates, leading to the rear, which we trust will more than manage stormwater runoff, easing any concern. The gentle sloping nature of our land is favorable toward the front of the property, in our opinion, and will aid in directing water again to permeable surfaces. We incorporated weeping tile and included crushed stone and permeable materials, very costly, I might add, in the back retaining wall to alleviate runoff strain on both ourselves and surrounding neighbors. Use of a rain barrel will be added, an effective measure, in our view, to manage runoff as well. Eaves, gutters, and downspouts will be installed on the structure and drain into both the barrel along with the permeable material catchment area for what we believe will contain flow, add protection, and better drain water. Superficial cuts are made on concrete slabs that, in our opinion, will help slow and direct water flow toward permeable surfaces. Perimeter planning in the form of a living wall will be incorporated, ensuring privacy, beautification, improve air quality, and sound issues. Planters with potted flowers will be evenly dispersed throughout to ensure added absorption of water and address other aesthetic aspects of landscape. We will also be installing an elaborate birdbath to attract the area's beautiful assortment of birds, such as blue jays, robins, and cardinals. It's now been six months that our property has been in the state, and measures have withstood heavy rain and snow, even record-breaking ones, without any adverse effects directly emanating from our property, at least according to our knowledge to date. Contrary to how it may appear, or as egregious it may appear on paper, we are extremely confident and satisfied that the general intent of the bylaw has been achieved, and in our estimation, concessions for mitigation now fall within the 34% range in addition to the current provided-for landscape allocation of the plan. Most important, and we want to stress, and are very pleased to inform, the community planning has no concerns with the application and has no objection regarding this variance or any of the others. We hope the committee views this favorably in granting relief of this variance. My wife, Caterina, will now speak to the last two variances.
Just quickly in the time, just quickly in the time we have left, variance two and three, in our view, are minor. In variance two, we've already spoken with our neighbor to the west of us, we'll do that living wall that you just heard about, and with your approval, we'll move forward with that. With variance number three, the stairs is really a safeguard in that it is just the length of the deck and eases in and out of the hot tub. And so, considering this, we feel we meet the four tests of, for your approval, in that these are minor, with an appropriate use of land's space, the space in code and with bylaw and official plan and general intent. Just lastly, very quickly, you have the three letters from our neighbors in our area. We also have 15 signatures from neighboring, from our neighbors, not only have reviewed the plans, but also support us, and not only to add value, or less have no impact on the neighborhood, but actually add aesthetic value and value in general to our community and neighborhood.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Yes, thank you. So we hold our question to them, and then we listen to the oppositions. Is they, yeah. The opposition is in person, or?
Through you, Madam Chair. The first opposition speaker is in person, and after that, we have opposition speakers online.
Okay.
Good morning, committee, once again.
Yes.
Yes, Nicholas Singh, Swansea Area Rate Paris. Again, I do have a question about the application and whether it's available. Our submission, we had a submission, so I'm not sure if it's available. I was told it would be.
This is where they see whether they can bring it up.
The Chair, when, when did you make the submission?
I made the submission on Monday. By noon, I was told it was not going to be made available, invisible.
Through you, Madam Chair. We don't have that submission, so if Mr. Singh could just speak to the merits of his document, that would be great, thank you.
Thank you. Oh, no. Oh, okay. So the proposed variance, number one, is for an area in the neighborhood in which there is a confirmed flooding, and we do ask you to consider that. A reduction in soft landscaping will compound this problem. However, I have had a chance recently to look at the measures taken by Seven Armidale to reduce the concern about flooding in particular, and I do recognize-
And I do recognize that they are impressive and, uh, probably, uh, do as good a job as any can in, in regards to the flooding. However, we also point out that the purpose of soft landscaping is to provide green space for trees, shrubs, grass, plants of all kind that help to maintain the soil and the environment and to reduce the summer heat dome effect in, effect in urban areas and to maintain the green character of this well-established neighborhood in our city. And we believe that the recurring reduction in soft landscaping is injurious to the public domain and should be limited in all but the most, uh, serious cases. We note that there is a driveway or a parking pad at the back. Could I get, uh, oh, we can't get the photograph. Yes, our, our presentation isn't available. We note that there is a possibility of having front yard parking. There are cars that are parked on the, on the driveway at the front and we would prefer to see soft landscaping preserved by moving the parking to the front of the building and having the parking, uh, rear parking and the driveway, uh, removed. Um, variance number two, um, the zero setback. Well, this helps to preserve, you know, good relations between neighbors because it removes, removes the deck activity away from the border. However, in speaking with the applicant, I understand that there may be a bell telephone company corridor that may be returned to the property and serve as a buffer. Um, I asked the applicant to address that if they would when they come back to rebut. Um, as for the variance for the wider steps, it is excessive at a, you know, 190%, but it is entirely in the backyard, so we're not going to object to that because it really doesn't affect the public, I believe. Regarding policy four, point one, point five of the official plan, as with the previous application, I note that the applicant has not submitted any data to show that the application meets the test for maintaining the intent and purpose of the official plan. And, um, as, uh, I would, as I did before, uh, I would ask the applicant why there has been no data, uh, presented for this, and I would ask the committee, again, to present its reasons for not applying the test for the intent and purpose of the official plan as per section 45 of the Planning Act. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Any question to this speaker? Yeah, okay. Thank you. Uh, the next speaker. Uh, the next.
Tracy, you've been unmuted. Can you please clarify if you're from the same household as James? If that's the case, you will.
Uh, yes, yes. And I will be speaking on behalf of us.
So you're speaking for both of you?
Exactly right.
Thank you.
Okay.
Perfect, thank you. So, good morning, Madam Chair and members of the Committee of Adjustment. As I said, my name is Tracy Mara Lucas and I am the resident owner of 134 Morningside Avenue, and I will be speaking on behalf of myself and my husband, James Lucas. For a bit of context, our property is located south of Seven Armidale, so we are attached via the backyard. In October 2023, we purchased the property and moved in December 2023. In July 2024, we commissioned the land surveyor to get a survey done of our property in preparation for putting up a new fence since the existing fence is old and in need of repair. During the survey process, the survey had indicated that our fence was placed approximately half a meter on all sides into our actual property boundary and that some of our neighbors may be encroaching on our property. We made note of this and decided that we would address this issue prior to putting up our new fence, which we plan to do later this year. There are two issues that I would like to address today. The first one is related to the soft landscaping, which I understand that the applicants did address, but I will still continue with what I plan to say. As per our current bylaws, as you know, residential property should maintain a minimum of 50% of the rear yard for soft landscaping, and this application is requesting that this 50% requirement be reduced to only 13.94%. The lack of the soft landscaping on this property will have a direct impact on my property and those surrounding this property due to the insufficient drainage and elevation of where the structures have been currently placed on their, in their backyard. As you are aware, Swansea has historically had issues with flooding and therefore any significant reduction in the current standards that are outlined in our bylaws will increase the risk of flooding events occurring in the future. In addition, the partially built structure at the rear of the property has a peaked roof, which will funnel rainwater directly onto my property, thus exacerbating the potential for a flood event to occur. Further to the above, based on the plans submitted to your committee, the soft landscaping calculations have included a portion of our property as belonging to them. More specifically, they have indicated that the land immediately sold to the new ancillary structure that has been built, has been partially built on their property, is actually our property. However, as far as, is their property, however, as per our survey done July 2024 and subsequently confirmed with a visit from the survey just last week in which he pegged out and marked out our property lines, this is in fact our property. I've submitted pictures to the committee with my letter to support these conclusions. Given the fact that they have counted a portion of our property in their soft landscaping calculation, it is likely that this proposed 13.94% soft landscaping is actually less. Since the ancillary structure they've built on, uh, partially on our property has to be moved, I therefore request that they, um, sorry, since the ancillary structure they have built at the south of our property has been built partially on our property and therefore must be moved onto their property in accordance with the property ownership laws and land registry rights, we request that they implement a new roof design and/or use trough system that would ensure rainwater runoff is contained to their property and does not directly discharge onto their property, onto our property rather. They have indicated they would do this and, and that's satisfying to me. Issue number two regarding rear setbacks. Since they have built this ancillary structure on a portion of our property, they can't possibly have built this according to our bylaws with respect to rear yard setbacks and structure overhangs. As mentioned previously, they have built a structure with a concrete base and its structure has associated fixtures including irrigation rocks, large gray drainage pipe that is fixed to the ground, and these have all been placed on our property and without our consent. I've also provided photographs to support this that are take, that were taken just last week, February 5th, 2025. Finally, given all the information that I presented to this committee, my husband and I respectfully ask the Committee of the Adjustment deny the variance related to the soft landscaping and ask the applicants to revisit their plans to ensure they are abiding by all relevant bylaws, particularly with respect to soft landscaping and rear setbacks, and that they move the ancillary structure and associated fixtures, again, including irrigation rocks, large gray drainage pipe, off our property because these prevent us from putting up our new fence, which we plan to do later on this year. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Okay, thank you. Any question to this applicant? I, I do have a great quick, maybe a question, half a, half a question, half is a comment. Uh, when you mentioned there's a property line dispute, um, do you, uh, you should understand this committee is not, uh, is not our mandate to.
Yes.
And then, uh, and then it is a serious matter to you for, uh, for sure, and I sort of suggest that this only can, you can bring it up to some legal consultants. They are the ones who handle that. And that's one thing. And the other thing is that whatever this committee approve can only approve within the applicant's property.
Right.
And we will not approve anything that is outside of the applicant's property. That, that's what I want to just mention. Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. And this is why I wanted to bring it up because we have engaged our lawyer who helped us purchase this property and he has indicated, um, that, uh, there's no unregistered rights on our property, so anybody that is encroaching on our property is actionable trespass.
Yes.
And, uh, and so I want to let them know I had a time.
That's, that, that's all. I think we still have other questions. Uh, yeah, let's focus on this, uh, application then. Okay, thank you. Yeah.
Uh, Madam Chair, I would just like.
Question?
Yeah. I'd like to address something and, and people in the room, please keep their outrage to themselves rather than express it.
Yeah, all right. Yeah, I, I, yeah, I don't, I, okay, thank you. So, do we have questions specifically for the, uh, period speaker? Uh, no, Ms., Ms. Lucas. All right. So now we have the applicant back. Uh, you have a chance to, to deliver your rebuttal of the, the comment that, uh, I, I, I think is, let's focus on the, uh, uh, soft landscaping issues. Yeah. That is, you are quite, um, you, you have a deficiency on that, yeah.
Madam Chair, we, we recognize the importance of addressing that variance. We've made costly and in-depth concessions. We've carved up an entire aspect of our driveway, uh, almost 250 square feet, um, to the east of us. Uh, we are, uh, maintaining all the measures that we've, uh, discussed today. I'm sorry to, to have to, uh, deal with the fact that there was, in my view, superfluous and, and, uh, uh, extenuating, uh, circumstances here that do not, uh, affect the variances at hand and that those are going to bias any decision here today. I think that's a, a, a valid concern. We've, we've done our very best. We've, uh, we've employed, uh, all the professionals, architects, surveyors, uh, where, according to them and according to all city protocol, I may add, where we were asked to do a very thorough zoning, uh, bylaw review and now to have to hear that, uh, zoning bylaws have been, um, uh, you know, broken, I mean, that, that, that goes against anything we would think of doing. If you can bring up the picture of what we did with our home, uh, and to understand what's happening in the neighborhood, I mean, we could have easily demolished this house and built a monster like, uh, a majority of our neighbors. Actually, a neighbor up the street just was given 99% coverage of their, I, I won't get into that, but anyway, um, we maintained our historic character, we preserved the charm of the home, uh, we did everything to code. Uh, when we were asked to do a, a thorough, um, uh, review in terms of a bylaw, we, we, we complied. Uh, we were, we are complying with, uh, any permit, uh, aspect, um, and unfortunately that's encumbered with these variances, but we ask that we please, please address these variances, deal with these variances, uh, know that we have done everything we possibly could in our power to alleviate, um, uh, flooding concerns or issues, and we also have a number of neighbors, uh, that are actually lower set than we are in terms of slope that have no concern whatsoever and have signed, uh, uh, a letter, uh, stating their, their, uh, their support.
Okay. But thank you. Yeah, we have questions, uh, uh, for you. Yeah. Yes, please.
Thanks, Chair. Um, a couple of questions. So obviously it's the rear landscaping that I think has got everyone's attention, right? So, um, the deck that, the wooden deck that you have in the back, uh, it has gaps in between the boards.
Yes.
So does, so underneath, is it round underneath?
It's, it's all permeable. It's crushed stone and soil and actually we have pictures that we didn't submit because.
No, no, I, I'll take your word for it.
So it's a, it's a, it's a six inch bait catchment basin, so to speak, made of crushed stone and it goes the entirety. And we can actually, like I said, we can actually expose the bottom face of that stair right around the structure, the, the platform there. And, and you'll see that there is a lip, a, a four to six inch lip that comes down below the concrete into underneath the deck.
Okay, that, that's fine. I, I just wanted to make, you know, on record that, um, the deck while doesn't contribute, I mean, it's not, it's hard landscaping, but.
And we understood that.
If you allow water through it, it actually gets into the ground.
Absolutely. And, and, and we understood that and we took that into account. And I also, you could see, we've only got to half of it, but on the, on the east portion of our drive, the, the portion of our driveway, we actually cut, can, can we bring that photo up? The east portion of the driveway, just beyond our gate. So there's our, no, no, there's another one that comes further to the front. That's the back of the home.
There.
No, that's one side, so that's going to remain permeable, that wasn't going to. Now we've made a concession, we'll keep that permeable. Okay, again, um, the context is very important here. Because we built as of right, we built to code, we have a one foot setback on the westerly portion and a, uh, two foot setback on the west, on the easterly portion. So in effect, our back gates actually start where the renovation begins. So our back gates have maintained, um, their location, okay? And so that's, that all works out. So it's the opposite side of this I want to point your attention to. So that's our, that's just again, to give you, this is not happening in our neighborhood, okay? And this is, I mean, we live here, uh, we play, we work here. This is our ideal for what we want to see in our neighborhood. If you look at this house straight on, there's no way you can tell that almost an extra house within right, I may add, was added in behind the structure.
Right, so.
No change whatsoever.
I'm gonna stop you there just because I want to focus back on the questions.
I just want to get to that picture if we can get to that picture. There. Okay, so that's our back gate that's open. That's our back gate that's open. And if you can see, there's three quarters of the asphalt there have been removed because we were again making a concession. We'll remove that other strip as well because we were going to make kind of a design with porous and permeable materials. We'll remove that entire, of course, within our boundary, we'll remove the entire aspect of that and we will make fully permeable, um, uh, surface there as well.
So that's, that's a driveway?
That's a driveway.
It's a pretty narrow driveway.
It is a narrow, but we've been, as part of our, as part of our, uh, previous permitting, we have been granted parking at back. That has, that permit is closed and it has been.
Must have a small car.
It has been granted.
So.
The parking spot in the back is.
So I appreciate your enthusiasm for that. You meant to, so I'm, you've got a big concrete slab in the back. I thought I heard you speak to, uh, measures that you have in place that mitigate that a little bit. I heard the word permeable sink and, and other things. I don't frankly fully understand that. Uh, so maybe you could just take a moment to explain to us, uh, the mitigation measures that you have in place, uh, to address the concrete slab in your backyard and the runoff problems that that might entail.
Right, so on both, on perimeter, on each side, we've maintained, uh, one to two feet on each side.
I see that, yeah, I see that in the photo.
Yes, okay. There's also cuts made in the slab, so almost like a sidewalk effect. Everything that's coming down from the structure, remember, we're gently sloping to the front. We're sloping to the north. And again, I have my concerns, we're actually below the, the opposition, we're, we're lower.
I, I know the area quite well, frankly.
So everything is moving, again, you talked about the sink, it's, it's a catchment basin. There's that, that, underneath that deck, there is a large catchment basin that will catch.
Under the wood deck.
Under the wood deck, exactly.
So you're saying that the water, uh, on the concrete slab will be shed into those, uh, strips along the outside and then into the catchment area underneath the deck?
There as well as on the westerly and easterly portion that we've also.
Right.
Alongside the extension.
We've added, we've, we've added those as well.
Okay. And the water that would shed off your garage, it looks like you have a shed roof that points towards the rear of your line.
Correct.
That line, so that water will be captured and how are you planning to discharge that water?
We have two basins on either, barrels on either side and also the gutter system is going to work so that the downspouts run right into that perimeter. That's the plan, the, 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 and there's weeping, and there's weeper, uh, all around and crushed stone all around the retaining wall.
Lastly, you've done a, you know, obviously a pretty significant renovation here. Uh, you've got the support of many, not all your neighbors. When you poured the concrete slab, uh, did you have a building permit for that or did you have a permit for that or is that?
Didn't have a permit for that, but we went.
Because we have the parking.
We had a parking spot already granted. The parking spot was, should also.
You replaced what was there previously?
It should also be noted that the structure that we built there is actually small, has a smaller footprint than the garage that existed prior. We don't have that picture.
Right, I'm not worried.
Okay, anyway, I'm just saying, so.
Let's, 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 yeah, let's stop there. Only because it, it is relevant whether you build to code or you think that is as right, this kind of construction require a building permit, all right?
We understand and we, we followed all protocol with regard to that.
Okay. Any other questions to?
Yes.
Can I just reiterate that we had that discussion? I know Rob highlighted earlier with the community planner and we've discussed this all and we, we have, they had no objection at all with, with the plans and the details that we had described. So just wanted to, to, to state that, that we have done that with city staff as well.
Yeah.
I think Dylan has a question.
Uh, yeah, Mr. Wade have a, yes, he has a question, yeah.
Yeah, so, so just to, I still not clear, I don't understand why this concrete slab was poured or even the deck was built without having gotten these variances first. Can you explain that?
We were under the understanding that we had the parking spot as part of our home permit already from our previous, from our, from our build of our renovation.
Yeah, but that's.
So the parking spot was already part of basically repairing it.
But we also, we also understand, Madam Chair, just said that, Madam Chair, can you reiterate what you just told us prior to this?
No, wait, 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 sorry, can I be clear?
Yeah.
The parking spot's fine, but there's a big concrete slab that's not the parking spot that's also been poured. So what, what's, why was that poured without the proper?
No, the park, the parking pad which allows for hardscape is a big portion of that backyard. The maneuverability for that parking. The maneuverability for that parking spot also needs to be accounted for. So the amenity slab, so to speak, in our back there is maybe 10 by 10 when accounting for everything in the backyard there. The slab aspect.
No, I'm so sorry, I think you've missed it.
I want to continue to clarify. So are you saying that the reason you have the concrete slab is because you need it for maneuvering the car out of the parking spot?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Just, I just want to...
But that still wasn't, was that concrete beforehand as well? What was that before? Was that also...
Yes, yes. No, it was before, yes.
Okay.
I, I, I just want to, I can see Mr. Weed's question, it's not being properly answered either. Does not matter that you have the permit of the parking pad, it's only a permission that you can have a parking pad there. But construction like this, you still have to apply for a separate building permit because as construction...
We have, Madam Mayor, we did in this...
You have a construction...
We had a construction permit for all the original, including the demolition of the original ancillary structure.
That's fine. That's the, that's the answer we want.
Okay, sorry, I was...
We were going to get, but then...
My enthusiasm, sorry.
That's, that's the simple question. Okay, thank you. And actually, any more question? I do have a couple of questions. Just maybe one. Yes, stay, yeah, I need this plan. You have 13% as soft landscaping, 13 something percent. Where is it?
Oh, it's the, it's the two strips. It's the two strips on the, on the side.
Oh, just the partial, that's beyond, between the deck and the property line, there's a little piece and then where is the other piece?
Yes.
And along the entire fence on the other side, on the east side. Right? Yeah.
So you must say it's not very clearly stated, it's not even stated. That's why I worry about where you get this 13 point something percent from.
Yeah.
Because it's not indicated any, in any graphic terms or dimensions.
No, no, there is, there was a calculation.
There is a landscaping plan?
Yeah, there was, well, there's calculation for the plan that we sent, all these, there they are. There are all the, all the calculations.
Yeah, but I know, but then the plan doesn't indicate where it is and then I want to show where you can...
We understand, Madam Chair. We, again, we are novices with regard to this. We hired the, we hired the architect and surveyors to do their part and really it's the best we could do.
It's fine. No, well, further from here, you probably had your architect indicating where the location of...
Absolutely. Yeah, we could make that a condition of approval, sure.
Understood, yeah.
Yep.
Yes. Okay. Any, because I don't see it anywhere. So, so, okay. Any other questions? Yeah? Nope. So we do not have any more questions. So we are in committee now. So anyone want to start a motion or comments, please? Okay, Mr. Weed, yeah.
I'm just wondering if, if we do approve it, if we can include the usual wording, annotation about not approving of construction before the variances have been approved.
Well, I can't, can you repeat it? It's sort of, we can't, we some words...
We have wording that we...
Oh, standard clause.
Standard clause, yeah.
All right.
Sure.
Chair, I'll, did you want to say? This one, I will admit when I first reviewed this, this one caused me a little bit of pause because, you know, when you look at the numbers, 13% when 50 is required, you know, that's pretty significant, that's a pretty significant departure from what is required. I do know this area fairly well. You are kind of lower, you've got a big ravine on Morningside and up along Windermere and all that water does kind of shed down eventually into your area. So it is kind of important that, you know, homes in that area do have to have ways in which that water can be absorbed into the ground. And it's a little unfortunate frankly that, as Dylan points out, that, you know, you went ahead with this without kind of getting the full range of approvals that you probably should have. Having, having said that, you know, it appears that you have done a number of things to address that concern and potentially mitigate the impact of, of that hard landscaping in your rear yard. And you do appear to mostly have done what we always like to see is having discussions with your neighbors and you've got them on site. I frankly would like to see less hearts, less concrete in your back, you know, but I'm not too sure at this instance if it's already poured, it's going to be difficult to make that kind of adjustment.
But I must, I must say, I search a lot of your opinion, your comments. I do find it difficult in the beginning to support the 13% only because we see many sites that are quite limiting, that they can accommodate that. But when I look at this plan, they actually have a lot of opportunity to actually increase it. I'm not trying to say to meet the requirement, but at least increase it. But unfortunately, there is already so called poor, but we cannot, I mean, we almost give credit to them because it's built for that, why they could not, because the plan, the area of the fact that they actually can give that opportunities. When they say that a little bit of strips is going to be soft landscaping, I do not think that is practical. First of all, secondly, soft landscaping, soft landscaping is not just for water runoff or anything, it's also for climate heat and all that is to, is there a lot of things about soft landscaping, it's not just about taking in water. That's what I want to remind people. Yeah. So I just want to put a couple of comments like that out and then it's difficult for me to say that they cannot increase it up to maybe even another 10% or something, but it's a bit late now it seems to. Yes.
Yes, through you, Madam Chair. I carefully listened to the applicant and they, and I read all the submission letter. I think the applicant did a very good job on, with adding those two strips on both side of the property and also explained that under the deck there is a catch basin for just collecting the waters. And I mean, I think, and then the applicant also mentioned that there are some opening in the concrete that, that let the water just pass through. I think, and in the front lot, there is a plenty of landscape. I think a combination also applicant mentioned that a portion of the driveway leading to the back of the property will be built with permeable pavers. So I think combination of all the, all the things, all the design and consideration that the applicant provided and considered is, is satisfy me with the, with that first variance, which is almost 14% out of 50%. I think the combination of all those different steps that the applicant does, it's, it satisfies me personally. And the rest, we are having three variants and I think to my eyes it's minor.
Okay, thank you. Yes, you want to ask a question, yeah?
Zola asked, made a couple of points which I didn't hear from the applicant. Can we just quickly beg your indulgence to go out of committee so that I can ask the applicant a couple of questions? You mentioned that there's holes in the concrete to allow drainage. Can, can you confirm that?
There are divots, divots.
I don't know what a divot is.
Okay, there are cuts, yes.
That's to go right through to the ground?
Not right through, no. Superficial, topical so that...
So all it's really doing is channeling water.
Exactly. Channeling and directing water.
It's not holes in the concrete.
Okay, then I misunderstood.
No, I just want to be clear about what we're dealing with. You also mentioned permeable pavers. I didn't hear that from you either.
Yes, permeable pavers are going to be put in that slab on the, on the east portion of the, between where the old...
On the site plan where it says parking spot?
No, no, the spot leading to it. So in behind the back deck, if we can get that picture up again, where the back deck shown.
So you can see it there as well?
I know, but I want to see it in the, I'd like the committee to see it on the...
Where is going to be the permeable...
No, come back, come back. It's just before you enter the back, so just before you enter the, right there, right there. That is all going...
Oh, so the side yard.
So there's 25 feet by seven feet, there's almost, there's 175 feet of permeable paver that's going to be installed there.
Right. So that doesn't actually contribute to your rear yard landscaping.
Well, again, because of setbacks and because of our gentle slope, that's going to catch.
No, I understand. I just wanted to clarify because I was, I heard you, I want to make sure I understood what you're proposing.
Yes.
So that, that we're looking at is actually the driveway?
Yes.
Okay, so we can actually say that the driveway will be replaced by permeable paper. Will that be acceptable to you?
Yes.
Okay. That's, that's, that's the part, okay. All right.
The driveway from the back gate on, where you see this gate, you can see the gate opening there?
Yeah, okay, from the, from the front...
25 feet depth.
Okay. So the front gate to the parking pad will be permeable paper. Okay.
Can I, to you, Madam Chair, can I get a clarification? Is the entire pathway or portion of that driveway? Because what I understood is portion of it is just that they, they add some stone for the water.
No, I will suggest the, the whole driveway.
Entire driveway, thank you very much for clarification.
It's very difficult to do a little bit, I think.
Yes, that slab that's still...
It's fine. Now we're, we're back into committee, that's fine. Okay. Mr. Business, any comment?
Yeah, for me, for me, this proposal just doesn't pass the litmus test of transparency. I have a lot of concerns about lack of soft landscaping. I have a lot of concerns from what I've seen from photos and from your neighbors. I have not been convinced.
Okay, you would, you do not support. Okay. It seems that everybody giving their comments...
Dylan?
Mr. Dylan, yeah.
I agree with my colleague Ryan. I feel like this could have been thought out in a way that would provide a bit more soft landscaping. And, you know, the fact that the concrete's been poured is not really something that we're concerned about. That should have been, this should have been addressed before the concrete was poured and maybe had that happened, you know, additional soft landscaping could have been provided. So I'm happy to support two and three, but I, I don't support variance number one.
Oh, you, you would support the two other variants but except the soft landscaping?
Yeah, or...
We will refuse that variance number one, you mean? If you, you were going to make a motion, is that right? Yeah?
I'm happy to let other people make a motion. That's just fine.
Okay. Yeah.
Through you, Madam Chair, if there's any, there's no other question, I can start putting forward a motion and see how it goes.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Through you, Madam Chair, I would like to put forward a motion to approve this application with one condition, that the driveway is to be constructed with a permeable paver and that's the only condition. And then just that standard clause that you want to add to the, to the notes that we don't encourage for the applicant to build without permits. I don't know exact phrase, but what I think Dylan suggested, that clause as well.
And also the standard clause that we will only approve what this, what this we approve, not beyond, anything beyond. There's a standard clause for that too, I think.
Okay, that's my motion.
Yeah.
Sorry, through you, Madam Chair, we would only put that clause in if you're tying to plans.
Oh.
I don't believe you're doing that here.
Okay.
And the driveway would be from the gate to the parking pad.
Yes. Thank you, Sabrina.
With permeable pavers, yes.
Thank you very much, Sabrina. Yes.
We have a motion on the floor. Anyone would like to second that?
Yeah, Chair, I've, again, I'm, I do struggle with this one a little bit. I am going to second it because I, I, I do think that the applicant has, well, I really wish they hadn't poured the concrete slab. I think in recognition of what has happened, they have tried to mitigate it. One option frankly would have been for them to, you know, us to actually have them remove at least a portion of that. And I don't know if that's a good thing or a bad thing, but since it's already poured. But I do think the applicant has done a reasonable job of attempting to mitigate the problem which they created. And there is reasonable ability to, for the rear property to absorb the rainwater. They put in rain barrels. I presume that they will use that appropriately, not just discharge it into the city system. And I, I do note that planning staff have had several conversations with the applicant and it would appear that planning is satisfied, which is pretty rare to get them on board for an application which on the surface of it seems to be so deficient. And I think that reflects the fact that they have had several discussions and they are satisfied, as perhaps I am now, that those mitigating measures will offset the concrete slab in the rear, which frankly I really don't like, but I will second the motion for those reasons.
Okay. Yeah, we have a second. So we have given a comment, can, can, can we have a hand for proof for this motion? Three to two is approved, yeah.
Thank you.
And Mr. Dylan, I mean, I'm sorry, Mr. Weed and also Business, dissent. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Five minutes break? Yeah, we, we, a five minutes break is requested. We're going to have a five minute break. Thank you. We resume. The next item is number 1064 S. D. Avenue. This is to construct, uh, to alter existing two-and-a-half-story detached dwelling by constructing a front-two-story bay window and a rear-second-story sunroom addition, and a third-floor addition with rear cover deck, and also to construct a one, uh, new one-story, uh, garage. And we, uh, they asking for six, eight variances. We also received, uh, surveys, site, site plan for planned elevations, and three photographs, and a cover letter from the agent, Albert's report, and also, oh, a, a, uh, historical survey from the agent. And we received comment from, uh, 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 community planning and engine, transportation engineering, and also from, uh, uh, staff report from community planning. We have, uh, we see support from, uh, 60 Standish Avenue and also 14, a total of 14 letters in support, uh, in the, in the label, uh, in the near labels. And, um, that's all we have received. We have received, uh, 40, 46, 58, 65, and 69 S. D. Avenue's support. We are ready for the agent. Or the applicant.
Trevor, you've been unmuted.
Yes, good afternoon. My name's Trevor from 510 Jarvis Street.
Okay. Do we have any other speakers registered to speak in opposition or?
Through you, Madam Chair. No, there's no other speakers registered.
Okay. So, uh, all right. So there, it's not contested. So, uh, I want to give us your name and address. Let's start from there.
Yep, it's Trevor Keer from 510 Jarvis Street.
Okay. So, uh, you do not have any opposition. Let me check with the panel members. They will have, need a presentation from you. Do you need a presentation? We may have questions, right? Yeah. Uh, I, I do have a question. It's always to have, um, as to do with soft landscaping. Your variance number six, uh, you have a deficiency. It seemed that, do you think this, this is a question, can you think that, um, you can, uh, uh, increase it by reducing, if you go to the, your site plan, by reducing some of the stone paving? Because there seem to be a very large area of stone paving.
We can do that. We actually, we actually did take some up, um, during our zoning review. We tried to increase it up to where we are now. We can increase it, whatever number I suppose is, uh, is required.
Oh, I mean, of course, if you, you, you're willing. I mean, what, what you require is 50%. Now you're almost at 28%. I, I'm just saying that, I, 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 just my, my, uh, question to you, if you can increase it even five or 10%, that will be acceptable to you?
Yeah, sure. If you, if we can do 5%, that would be great.
Five percent after 10%? Okay.
So we can't, we can't suggest necessarily a-
No.
A percentage, but-
Yeah.
You, you did say, sir, that you could do much better than that. What, what do you think you could in fact do? Those are just flagstones, right?
Yeah.
That's right, yeah.
So could you, could you pull enough of the flagstones to get you to the, to the, uh, 50%?
And then you limit that, uh, that require, uh, that variance totally, and I, uh, some, something like that, you know? We have to ask you whether you can do it.
Well, 50, 50% to get to 50% means we're pretty much ripping off most of the, you know, it's not a patio anymore. So none of having 50% less of the flagstone doesn't really make sense. It would have to be sort of redesigned. But if that's what's required to get this through, we would, we would do that. Uh, my preference would be to just try to increase it by another 10% or even 15% or something like that. That would get us up to, well, up to four, almost 40%.
Okay, 40? You're happy with 40? Or 45? Okay, we are happy. 40?
I am. I don't know what my colleagues are. I think that's a reasonable number.
Yeah, 40%. That's, that's, yeah. Did you hear that? We, we-
Yes, yes.
Yeah, we will, we would like to see a little increase, and then you agreed to 40%.
That's right.
Oh, sir, sir, um, that's the percentage. Would you be able to give us, uh, what the square meterage would be if you got to 40%?
Um, yeah, just, it might take me a second.
Sure.
Uh, number six. Well, I can give you 50. It's 32.78. 10%, um, I don't know how to do this actually without, um-
You wait a one second.
I wouldn't rely on us, sir.
Oh.
40% would be 80% of 32.78.
There, Dylan.
So-
82.78.
Yeah, give us the number then.
So 32.78 plus 0.8.
33 square meters.
32?
33.
No.
No.
Now that, that would get you over 50.
Yeah, you cannot more than 32. Okay, sorry.
Dylan, did you have a suggestion?
Uh, I'm just going to do the calculation here.
Can I, can I just suggest, only suggest, you have to agree to it, is 26.22 square meter?
26.22.
26.22, yeah.
Yes, up from 18.29, right?
Yeah.
Which was, which was the variance. Yes, that's fine.
Okay. So let's, uh, uh, make a revision on that. It's, uh, 40, 40% of landscaping result to 26.22 square meter.
Right.
Okay, we, it was amended, uh, variance number six. Okay. So, all right, let's, uh, move on. Uh, uh, any other questions, please? No more question. Now we are in committee now.
Chair, just a question to you or Sabrina. The planning condition is to tie the site plan, but we've got a, can, we've, we've changed the site plan a little bit by changing the rear landscaping.
Yes, so we-
I think we could change, sorry, to elevations. I think it was, um, because the, the planning condition, I think, was to make sure that they don't, um, that the building depth is limited to the ground floor.
Yes.
So if we tie it to elevations, I should do the truck?
Yes.
Good idea.
Yeah.
Great, Madam Chair, that's fine.
Yeah, we can, we can specify, yeah, that, because the condition is only to the building, they do not want them to, to exceed to the ground floor, right? Yes, sir.
Okay.
All right. So, uh, uh, any other question? Let's, let's have a, uh, motion. Yeah.
Go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Bissonett?
Yes, I'll put forward the motion to approve the variances.
As amended.
As amended.
And also tied to the site plan, uh-
And also tied to the site plan.
Regarding the building-
Not the site plan, elevations.
Tied to elevations.
Elevations regarding the building length, right? Yeah, sorry.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, two conditions, and also it's amended. Any other conditions you, you?
So staff, staff have a condition, right? February 4th, if I'm not-
Tying it to site plan, but we're going to do the elevations instead.
Yeah. So you just don't do that.
Okay. You got all the conditions? Okay, uh, who wants a second?
I'll second.
Oh, oh, okay. Mr. Weed's second. Oh, in favor with the two conditions and amended, uh, agenda. Think, I, you know, mostly approve, uh, amended agenda. Okay. And, uh, next item is number 11. Uh, it's six, number six, Kirk Newton Road. This is to, um, construct a new two, uh, three-story detached, it's a four-plex, uh, building with a front ground floor porch with stairs and a front walkway, and a rear exterior stair, where balconies on the ground floor, second and fifth floor, and a basement walkout. The existing Ossier building in the backyard is going to be demolished. Uh, they are seeking for four variances. We also receive a survey, site plan for plans and elevations, egg photographs, and also cover letter, uh, from the agent, presentation material from the agent, and we receive comments from the urban forestry and, uh, transportation services, and also, uh, from Metrolink, some comment from Metrolink. We see support from 33 Kirk Newton Road, and also oppositions. We've received four oppositions, um, in the, in, in the near neighborhood. Um, we are ready for the agent or applicant.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. My name's Christian Chan of the Planning Agency. Um, I'm a registered professional planner and the, um, agent for the owner is Ms. Serena Deng. And my address is suite 1, sorry, suite 138 at 157 Adelaide Street, West Toronto, Ontario.
Yes. Uh, do we have others, uh, registered speaker on this?
Through you, Madam Chair, we have one registered speaker online and one registered speaker at 20 Kirk Newton Road that we were unable to reach after multiple attempts.
Oh.
We do have one online.
All right, thank you. Uh, Mr. Chan, you do have some, uh, opposition. Can you give us a five-minute presentation then, please?
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you. Just to advise as well is that the purpose of the application is somewhat incorrect in that it refers to a, uh, second-floor balcony, a third-floor, third-story balcony. Those are not, um, included in this proposal. So, uh, should there be a decision made on this application, I would request the committee to amend the purpose of the application to amend, uh, to remove reference to the second-floor and third-floor balconies.
Okay.
So just briefly, there are four variances proposed in this application. I've discussed the proposal with planning staff, have noted no concerns with the application. I know that Transportation Services has a staff report to convert, uh, to restore the front yard's parking space to soft landscaping as well as the city's boulevard, and restore the curb to a full curb cut. And there's a Metrolink's advisory as well as the urban forestry conditions to which there are no issues with, uh, my client to comply with. Uh, so the proposal is for a four-plex. Uh, the above-grade floor area of the building is 370, sorry, 307, uh, square meters. Uh, there are each of them, of, each of the units are, are two bedroom units of approximately 1,100 square feet. Um, the building will have a height of 11.54 meters and a compliance south setback of, of, of 1.2 meters and a 0.60 north side yard setback. Uh, the existing site has a one-story bungalow. All those are supposed, are, are going to be demolished. In terms of the planning context, it's a neighborhood, it's zoned RM, and the site is also within the Fairbanks, TTC, Eglington Lines, major transit station areas. Um, just as a quick reference to that, PPS policy, 2.4.2.3 encourages, uh, planning authorities to promote development intensification within MTSA's. Um, also just to note, uh, in a demographic analysis, it's, the neighborhood also has a significantly lower percentage of rental households in comparison to the city at large, and what is proposed is a rental four-plex. Going into the variances, if I can ask staff to please turn to the images on page 10 of my planning rationale with regards to the maximum height. Uh, the variance that is sought is 0.54 meters above the permitted maximum height for a four-plex. The number of stories complies with the zoning bylaw and conforms to the neighborhood policies of the OP. Uh, the impact of the minor increase in height that is requested is offset by compliance with the permitted building depth and length. The proposed height increase is approximately 19 inches over the permitted maximum and is in my opinion minor, and imperceptible from the streetscape and adjacent properties. Uh, building heights have been approved, uh, 33 Kirk Newton for 11.53 meters. This is one centimeter over that. And as you can see by the elevations, that this building is substantially similar in design to the four-plex that was approved by this committee, uh, last year at 33 Kirk Newton, uh, both in building length, uh, depth, and the setbacks. So just about the same dimensions, except for one centimeter more in height. Uh, with regards to variance two for the north side yard setback, the proposed north setback is an improvement over the existing north setback of 0.55 meters. Uh, the prevailing character of side yards in the neighborhood are smaller side yards typically with one side yard at, or near the zero-meter side yard setback. And if I could ask staff to go to page 11 of the planning rationale, the image of the property data map, uh, just does show the building footprint areas in relation to each other, and it's clearly shown here that there are smaller side yard setbacks. In addition to that, I've analyzed the approved side yard setbacks in the immediate context, which range from 0.25 to 0.61, and also in the geographic neighborhood, uh, as little as 0.0 meters, 0.16 meters, 0.25, and up to 0.60 meters as well. With regards to the front yard setback, if I can ask staff to turn to page 12, uh, there's an image of the front yard setback, character of the immediate contact in the broader and the two adjacent streets. The front yard setback is, is proposed to be reduced to 4.8 meters, uh, and to position the length of the building further towards the street frontage and to limit the impacts of the building length on the adjacent properties. As seen on the figure that's presented to you, uh, the proposed front yard setback aligns with the front yard setback character on Kirk Newton Road, which is typically of smaller front yard setbacks than is proposed. Uh, the orange-colored properties have buildings that have the same or smaller front yard setbacks than is proposed in this application, and the, the blue dotted dashed line indicates the 4.8 meters. The property data maps are scaled, and I used the scaling tool to determine where that line lies on the property data map. So based on my review of the city mapping, the average front yard setback in the immediate context is 4.16 meters, and the most frequently occurring front yard setback is between 3 meters and 4.3 meters. Uh, 67 of the 98 properties, or 68% of the properties on Kirk Newton have front yards that are at or below 4.8 meters. Um, with respect to the front yard soft landscaping variance, um, just to note, the current lot has a front yard that's entirely paved that includes the city boulevard. The proposed front yard soft landscaping represents an improvement over the existing condition, which provides no soft landscaping. Uh, the front yards on Kirk Newton Road and the adjacent streets are dominated by hard landscaping, and in fact, what is being proposed with the resulting square meterage of front yard landscaping despite the variance of, of 59% is in fact a market improvement over the, the approved front yard soft landscaping, uh, in, in square meterage, uh, as provided for in the geographic neighborhood. So there's an improvement, in fact, of permeability in soft landscaping in comparison to the existing context, and also it exists on the site.
Yeah.
And since I realize that my time is limited-
Can you give us a, a quick summation? You have five minutes up. That's, yeah, okay.
Yes. Thank you, Madam Chair. And, and with that, just in summary, in my opinion, uh, the proposal meets the general intent of the OP. The zoning bylaw is minor and is desirable, and I respectfully recommend the variances approval.
Thank you. All right, so- All right, so we, we just wait to hear from the opposition to ask questions then, okay? Yeah, let's have the next speaker.
Through you, Madam Chair, we were able to connect, I believe, with um both speakers, so here's the first speaker.
Okay.
Connie, you've been unmuted.
Hi, so just before I forget, this last person's last comment about how the we, there's a lot of hard landscaping in our area, that's because we are so limited for parking.
Excuse me, sorry, just before you start, sorry, I know that you don't want to forget something, I guess. Uh can you give us your first last name and your address for a record, please, yeah?
Sorry about that, I'm Connie Carabino, and I'm twenty Kirk Newton Road, and I object to the six Kirk Newton Road four-plex.
Thank you, okay.
The city is aware that there have been a majority of residents in an uproar all over Toronto objecting four-plex development, and we just want to be heard, and we would like some action taken. The proposed four-plex is ill-suited for our residential area. It's going to add congestion, overwhelm the neighborhood, and cause additional parking issues. Additional parking issues, again, let me go back on this hard landscaping. Yes, we wish we can have more, you know, landscaping with grass, but we can't. There is no parking on our streets as, as we stand now. Anyway, we're also experiencing firsthand look of these four-plexes on our street with your last approval, COA, thirty-three Kirk Newton. And it's enormous, it's monstrous, it looks awful beside a small bungalow. And the fact that it will cast shadows, potentially reducing the amount of direct sunlight to the neighbors currently that they receive. And knowing that the current cost of living is definitely, you know, up there, we need, we need to ensure that our sunlight is not compromised for our poor gardens, you know, us people that do grow their tomatoes and peppers and et cetera. Next point, MetroLink's permit and enforcement transportation, city planning, deputy secretary, all these sectors have consented already, of course, they have. They don't live on our street, and they're all claiming that it will contribute to middle housing supply. Yet, there are numerous amount of condominium projects in progress in the area right now. Thirty-eight story at North Cliff and Bond, twenty-four eighteen Duffin Street, there's a twenty-four story proposed, twenty-three Duffin Street, there's a pre-construction to be announced. And let me add, just up our street, Kirk Newton, two minutes away, nineteen oh one Eglington, there's a thirty-two story tower proposed. So if we want to talk congestion, oh, we've got it in the city of Toronto when this is all done. So all in which, all these additional condominium projects, it's sufficient to address any middle housing supply issue. Therefore, there's no need to use the middle housing supply as a reason for allowing these four-plex builds in our residence area. I've been living in this area for thirty years. If you're going to talk to me about MetroLink's TTC, it's the same people at that bus stop, let me tell you. There's no difference. So, and I'm assuming if someone can afford, which I believe that these four-plexes are probably going to go over three grand per month, they can afford that, they can afford a car, and that, again, contributes to the parking issues that we have. Anyway, before I draw close on this, I hope that the city of adjustment has reviewed my objection letter from number one to ten thoroughly, and I hope that a full, complete review is put in place before making the decision for the six Kirk Newton proposal. We've had quite a bit of issues with this builder already with the approved proposal on thirty-three Kirk Newton. They don't abide with the infrastructure laws. They don't, um, there's, actually, it's on the letter, there's, we've had quite a bit of issues with them.
Okay.
And lastly, I just ask that you take a moment and put yourselves in our situation. A four-plex on your street, a four-plex next to your home, just to understand our concerns and frustration. That's it, thank you for listening.
Oh, thank you very much, any question to this speaker? Okay, no, all right, so uh let's have the next one.
Elizabeth, you've been unmuted.
Thank you, um good afternoon, everybody, good afternoon, Madam Chair, committee attendees. Uh my name is Elizabeth Canoa, I reside at number eight Kirk Newton, so just adjacent to the property in question. Um and I do abduct to the four-plex build. Um I have provided a letter uh to detail my concerns, my main uh issues. I, I guess, I guess here's the thing, is we've gone through uh the property at number thirty-three. Um this number six is basically uh down the street and six, about six houses different. So they're in close proximity, despite the numbering, there's, numbers do skip. So um number thirty-three has obviously set a precedent, it is the first four-plex build on our street. Here we are with number two, um it is a larger, it is a deeper build, and um it has actually more variances than the previous four-plex. So as we see a pattern here and we have more four-plexes coming up, we just see them being built bigger, deeper, and with more minor variances at, at question. So that's also a concern. Uh our concern is uh the front setback and basically the facade of the building, so I'm hoping I'm uh terming that correctly. Uh with the proposed uh plan, essentially, if we sit on our porch, we will be looking at a brick wall. Um obviously, if we sit in the back, because the build, and I expected the build to be deeper, if we sit on our back patio, we will be looking at a brick wall. Um so there's obviously shading um that's going to happen, uh we will not, we will lose sunlight. Um we have on our south-facing door outside, we have windows, so we will lose that because of height. My next point is I have attempted to reach out and actually wanted to thank Christian for taking the time. Um I did call him on January thirty-first, he was helpful, explained that process, so I thank him for his time. Um I don't recall the onsite visit that he details in his supporting letter. I have never met him in person, so he has not spoken uh on a site visit um with any, with myself or anybody in my household, so I just wanted to point that out. In my discussion with Christian Chan, um he suggested us to speak to Ron and Rohan, who actually are not the owners but are part of the building, and Rohan actually is the owner builder of number thirty-three. Basically, Ron stepped out of the car and basically said we were too far along to make changes, so I questioned how there's no thought or consideration going into the neighborhood, considering we're going to be dealing with two builds on close proximity. The other issue I have is, apology on time as I try to track that, is the side setback. And I know that committee will rationalize that your proposing is doubled from point three to point six, but I think that you need to step back and look at the comparison. You're talking about a bungalow today that's going to be a four-plex, eleven point five thirty meters in height. That this side that is adjacent to me will have all the HVAC, will have all the kitchen exhausting for four units. Today, there's no venting or exhaust on the north side of the number six Kirk Newton Road. So um ideally, I would foresee this setback increased um and um to, just to allow more space between the two properties. I'm going to just skip through the rest, but I think obviously you've heard from my neighbor, there's been a lot of issues, uh you know, with, with, you know, obviously construction, and when we know that we're going to have to deal with construction. But just from a parking availability concern, we have a great mix of triplexes on our street. They usually about, uh next to each other, so they can afford to have a tenant rear parking, and it's a great balance. We have, if I can, at least um three uh with, three sets of these, so six buildings, uh with a good mix of, of basically multiplex and allowing rear parking for the tenants. So a lot of issues here, I really hoping that we can try to minimize it. I was glad to hear today that there's not going to be balconies, that the balconies are removed. I appreciate that, because I was going to suggest that if we can have some kind of screening, and if probably on the landing, if we can have some screening that basically faces number eight, because the stairwell is actually going to be closest to my, to my side. That would be, um I'd appreciate that as well.
Five minutes is up, can you give us a quick summary?
Yeah, no, that's, uh no, I basically said what I needed to say. I mean, I do want to have the front, ideally the front setback so that it aligns with number four, number eight, and all the other houses, and push the property back in to the lot would be ideal. Thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Yeah, let's see if the, the panel has a question for you. Any question to this speaker? No, okay, okay, let's bring back Mr. Chan to address the, the issues that the two speakers raised, thank you, yeah.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I thank the uh the neighbors for providing their comments. With respect to number twenty Kirk Newton's comments with regards to hardened landscaping, I just want to advise the committee to that, in fact, there will be a net increase in soft landscaping in the front yard on property of approximately two hundred and twenty to two hundred and thirty square feet. And then because of Transportation Services' condition, the city's boulevard will also be converted to soft landscaping. Obviously, the front walk permeable, permeable walkway would have to be provided for access to the unit. Uh but that would be an additional two hundred and fifty square foot, so we're looking at an additional five hundred square feet or more than fifty meters square of soft landscaping that's going on a lot that's currently entirely, the front yard is entirely paved. Uh with respect to a four-plex being building ill-suited for the neighborhood, I'd just like to advise that bylaw four seven four twenty twenty-three authorized the four-plex, well, multiplexes as, as a use in all our zones in the entire city. So therefore, as per the official plan amendment number six four nine, as well as bylaw uh six seven four twenty twenty-three, that uh these types of buildings are now permitted citywide, and in fact encouraged by planning through the expanding housing options and neighborhoods uh study and implementation. Uh with regards to parking, yes, there is no parking being proposed, but I do wish to also remind the committee that this is in a major transit station area, in the Fairbank major transit station area. And also, there was an amendment to the bylaw in twenty twenty-two, number, uh which was bylaw eight nine twenty twenty-two, which removed the required parking minimums for four-plex development. And in fact, all, all types of low-rise development in this, in this zone, that being also uh detached homes and semi-detached homes. Uh with respect to shadowing impacts, um I'd just like to advise too, and, and thank you staff for putting up the site plan here, because that explains what I'm about to say. Um even with a height of eleven meters for a multiplex in an RM zone, uh the building could be constructed uh without a building length or depth provision, because there's, multiplexes are not regulated for building length and depth in the RM zone. It could be constructed even longer and deeper into the lot to seven point five meter rear yard setback. So the building could be fifty-four centimeters lower, but it could be even longer. And if staff can zoom out a bit, uh we can show that, uh what the distance could be of this building going deeper into the lot. Uh so the impact of an as-of-right build form would actually be more impactful over than what is proposed. Uh with, with respect to cost of living, I can't speak to those items as they aren't matters that are before the committee for planning considerations. With respect to the uh concern regarding the front yard setback, again, the prevailing physical character of the front yard setbacks on Kirk Newton Road in the immediate context, in fact, is less at, at a rate of sixty-seven percent uh than what is being proposed here. So with respect to the official plan policy four point one point five, to respect and reinforce the existing physical character, it definitely respects the existing physical character because it's in fact more than what the prevailing physical character is providing now. With respect to the neighbor at number eight's uh comments, with respect to number thirty-three setting a precedent, in, in my respectful submission, something that has been approved by the committee uh already cannot be deemed to set a negative precedent. And in this case, and is what is clearly seen on the plans, is that there's a proposal before you that's substantially similar uh to the proposal that was approved at number thirty-three. Uh with respect to the patio, if I can go to, if I can ask staff to go to the survey, please? If you could zoom in, please, to the front porch. Yes, I can certainly appreciate that there would be some impacts arising uh from the proposed front yard setback to the adjacent northerly patio. Uh however, I do like also to highlight that the concrete front porch at number eight is not in compliance with the zoning bylaw in that the requirement for that concrete porch, in fact, all porches on all properties on Kirk Newton Road in this zone are required to be one point two meters setback from the lot line, and there are a lot of, as I've shown before too, with respect to the setback diagram, there are a majority of properties that have non-compliant front yard setbacks, and in fact, what's being proposed uh here is an increase over the prevailing character, both for the front yard setback as well as the north side yard setback, so it's improving an existing condition. Uh I can't speak to matters of issues between the builder and the neighbor in their discussions. However, I just would like to hope that uh the concern that was raised in this, in this particular matter will lead to more productive discussions, I'll be sure to facilitate those.
Thank you.
Uh with respect to HVAC and venting, um those impacts will be mitigated by the placement, by appropriate placement of those venting items uh on the building.
Thank you.
And addressed through the building permit process.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, before we, uh, we have questions for you. Uh can you go, can we go back to the purpose clause, because you said that you will have to, you make some amendment on, on that. Can we do that first?
Yes, Madam Chair, and thank you for highlighting that.
Yeah.
The rear balconies on the ground floor, second and third stories.
Then delete those?
Those should be, those should be deleted, because there aren't any rear balconies on the ground floor, second and third stories, but there is the rear basement walkout, so that needs to remain.
Okay, all right, so that, that is highlighted, is that correct, right? We delete that highlighted portion, a clause?
Yes, Madam, yes, Madam Chair, that's correct.
Okay, let's, yeah, yeah, we, we, we have that, and then uh my, we do have some questions. Do we have any questions for Mr. Chan?
Dylan.
Oh, oh, yes, Mr. Mr. Reed, yeah, Dylan, yeah. Go, go ahead, we cannot hear you.
Sorry about that.
Yes, yeah.
Um, uh the neighbor to the north uh was asking about putting privacy screens on the landings of the staircase. Uh would you be amenable to that?
Uh through you, Madam Chair, and thank you for that, Mr. Reed, yes, my client would be amenable to that.
Okay, thank you. Um and, and you, can I just reiterate, you, you, you promised to try to facilitate discussion with the actual builders. I just wanted to confirm that, because I think that's a obvious, aside of our scope, I think it's an important consideration for the neighbors.
Uh through you, Madam Chair, yes, Mr. Reed, uh I stated that I would facilitate conversations between the builder and the neighbor to the north arising out of the concern that, uh which was raised to me, that there weren't productive discussions between them, or from what I hear, uh productive discussions, I'd be happy to uh facilitate that between uh the parties.
Great, thank you very much.
Okay, any more questions? Okay, we do not have any more question, now we are in committee, okay?
Uh I'd like to, I'd like, so I can speak to this. So first of all, this was a really good, um like, uh the materials are really good and I thought very clear. Um this clearly fits with, uh you know, what the, what the city is envisioning and the purpose of the zoning bylaw as an official plan. Uh so I, I think, and also it's great that in fact we are improving the soft landscaping. Um I think that's a definite improvement at the front. Um even if it doesn't quite reach the required amount, it's much, much better than what's currently the case. So I think this is actually a very positive um and useful uh proposal. Um and I'm definitely willing to support it, and I'm only going to move a motion unless someone else has, wants to make comments.
I would just like to say I'm also in favor of this application. I, I think it's appropriate development, and I think the area and the lot can accommodate the four-plex. I, I think it's appropriate development and I think the area and the lot can accommodate the fourplex. It's close to transit and it meets the objectives of building more housing in the city. And an older unused single-family house will be replaced with four new homes. So, I too am in favor of it.
Okay, thank you.
Also, I want to point out just that there is no depth or length variance. So, as, as the person played out, you know, this is completely within what's allowed in terms of that, that aspect.
Yes.
Okay, so I'll, I'll move a motion to approve these variances with forestry condition number one.
And also the amended, the amended clause.
Yeah, sorry, the amended, the amended, move is to approve the amended variances. And purpose clause with condition, sorry, with forestry condition number one, with the transportation condition.
Yes.
And with the condition that privacy screens be provided on the landing on the north side, on the north side of all the landings.
North edge.
Of the rear staircase.
Okay. There, there's three conditions. Clear, right? So, anyone want to second that? Mr. Business second, and all in favor with a condition and amended clause? Thank you. All in favor, unanimously approve with those conditions and amended purpose. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chen, for coming. Next item 12 is 362 Dupont Street. This, this is to convert the existing three-story semi-detached dwelling by converting the commercial office space into two residential units. And they, they asking for one variance. And on this file, we have received a survey site plan, floor plan, and elevation, six photographs, and a cover letter from the agent, and also comment from transportation engineer. And we are ready for the applicant or the...
Through you, Madam Chair. We have the agent online and no registered speakers.
Okay.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. It's Martin Randall.
Yes.
35 Dalburn Drive, Toronto.
Yes.
Agent.
Yes, thank, you do not have any opposition, but let me check whether the panel had any questions. No, no, no questions. So, we, do you have anything you want to address the committee before we move into discussion?
I, I think with respect, it's a self-explanatory, simple application. This creates two dwelling units on the property. As you can see from the plan, there is no, it's a landlocked property. There is no ability to provide parking on the property. It's within 200 meters of the Spina subway. It's highly transit accessible and transportation has no objection to the variance, nor does planning.
So, so my question, it, it was a commercial property before, or is it, is it?
Yes, this, this is a semi-detached dwelling. And most recently, it was office-based for an architecture firm.
Oh, I see. Now they just, it looks like a residential building to me. So, you could convert back to a residential use, I guess, right?
Yes, there's, if you go along Dupont, a number of the residential buildings are either in residential or commercial uses. They've been converted over the years.
So, it is a permitted use, both commercial and residential? There, there's no application for like, or you lose the non-conforming law?
No, it's designated mixed use in the official plan and it's zoned mixed use as well.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, all right, so. I just want to make that clear because then it's, it's both uses are permitted uses, even if they're mixed use, but right, commercial and residential are the committed, are permitted uses. Okay. Any more, we are in committee now. No more questions? Yes, let's, yeah.
No, there is no question. Um, Madam Chair, there is no question, so I'm ready to put forward a motion.
Yes.
So, one, one variance, that's parking and the transportation. And the letter we receive on January 20, 38th stated that they have no objection. Therefore, I would like to put forward a motion to approve this application with no conditions.
Okay. And one second, Mr. Business second, all in favor with no conditions? I see, okay, all the hands are up. Approve, thank you. Approve unanimously, thank you. Next item 13 is deferred, and next item is number 14. Number 14 is 163 Ascot Avenue. This is to come, to alter the existing two-and-a-half-story detached dwelling by enclosing the rear ground floor terrace into habitable space. The existing one-story ossera building, which is attached garage in the rear, will be maintained and unaltered. We, we, we receive a copy of survey site plan, floor plan, and elevations, three photographs of subject property, and also a cover letter from the agent and the decision affecting the property. We, they asking for four variances, I believe, yeah. We are ready for the applicant.
Through you, Madam Chair. We have the agent on the line and no registered speakers.
Okay.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the committee. My name is Cardinal DeWano and I'm the owner at 136 Ascot Avenue. Thank you for the opportunity to present my application today.
Yes, thank you. And since you do not have any opposition, maybe we do have some questions for you. So, do we have any questions? I have just a quick one. Variance number three, the rear yard, soft landscaping, proposing nothing. So, is it a condition, like existing condition that you, it's not possible, right, to, to have any?
Yeah, that's correct, Madam Chair. We, currently we have a, a covered roof over, in between our, our existing property and the, and the detached garage that was under permit A38110EYK that was done in September 2010. So, yeah, right now, there's a covered roof in between those two structures and we're looking to just build, because our driveway is at the back there. Ninety-five percent of our time, we go through the back. We want to just propose a mudroom and make it usable for the kitchen that's in the, in that back area as well. So, we want to do a walk-in pantry with that space, so.
Understood. So, the existing condition has no soft landscaping anyway, right?
That's correct, yeah. If you look at the photos, if you can, you'll see it more clearly under picture number three, or number two as well, yeah. So, right where you see the covered roof in between.
Oh, okay, yeah.
That's where the addition we were proposing.
And then the fence part, you know, that, that in front of your building, that, that all this concrete is, is your property or the city property? No.
That's, that's the city property. You're correct.
Okay, so you can't, it's already concrete paved.
Correct.
Okay. The, the, the city paved it? All right, so any question to this speaker? Okay, we do not have any more questions. Do you have anything you want to address the panel before we move into discussion or decision?
No.
Okay, now we are in committee.
Chair, I'm happy to take this one. You know, these corner lots are interesting, particularly in downtown areas where this is becoming a fairly common feature. We saw one already today where there really isn't much in the way of rear yard. But I think in this case and other cases, it's offset by soft landscaping on the side yard, which doesn't actually get captured in the variances, right? So, and, and the front yard in this case also has lots of soft landscaping. So, I think when you look at the entire lot in, in totality, that it, it sort of satisfies, I think, cities' requirements for soft landscaping. So, and this is an existing condition, as the agent mentioned. So, I think it's a supportable application, move approval. I don't think there are any conditions.
Yes, but my, my question was, was to stay, from the photographs, I realized that they actually fenced the property, city.
Yeah, I didn't want to go there. That's probably not, you're not probably allowed to do that, but that's a little bit beyond our purview.
Yeah, exactly. But then, then there's a little bit of a surprise to me anyway because sometimes we, we do, that, that's corner lot do, the lots, they do have the feature that the, the landscaping compensate the lack of...
Yeah, again, that's something for the owner and the city to work out.
Okay. All right, do we have, yeah, motion?
Yeah, I did, I moved a motion already.
Oh, you, oh, you second, sorry. I have no condition, yeah, no, no conditions, right?
None, no.
Okay, motion is approved with no conditions. All in favor? All in favor, unanimously approved. Thank you. So, the next item we have is 555 Delaware Avenue. This is to construct a three-story detached dwelling with a cover porch and a front integral garage and a ground floor that was there and there was basement walkout and we have second, fifth floor balcony. And also to construction one-story ossera building in, in the rear yard. There will be two residential units in this property. And the, and the current application is, is to permit and increase in the floor space index and increase the height of the exterior wall. And we receive a plan of survey site plan, four plan elevations, revised site plan, four pens and elevation, and a red line revision on the zoning notice, and two photographs and cover letter from the agent and decision affecting the property, presentation materials from the agent. We also receive comment in, in the support from 175 Disco Street and also five signature petition in support on Delaware Avenue. We are ready for the applicant, yeah.
Through you, Madam Chair. We have the agent online and no registered speakers.
Okay.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the committee. My name is Marco Razolini from Secora Design Inc., 20 State Bank Road, Unit 202, Mississauga.
Yeah, you're seeking for two variances and you do not have any opposition. So, let me check whether we want a presentation, need a presentation from you. No, it seems that we do not require presentation from you. Any questions to the applicant?
Through you, Madam Chair. The applicant is making revisions to variance number two.
Oh, yes, they do have.
Perhaps maybe he can just confirm, and it's, it's presented on the screen here, that the front exterior main walls will be 11.11 meters for 74% and that the rear exterior main walls will be 11 meters for 64%.
Yes. So, you, you, yes, you agree with these revisions, right?
Yeah, that's correct. In addition to the revisions to the dormer width, we are also reducing the height of the structure, which positively impacts our main wall height variance that we're proposing.
Okay, thank you. All right, we do not require that, the, a presentation from you. Do you have anything you want to address the panel before we move on? Yeah.
I, I would just express that the application in front of you today is to increase the dormer width from the original proposal. And that comes with a minor increase in GFA. And the zoning examiner has reviewed it as main wall height extension, but it's really just the width of the dormers that has changed from the original.
Okay, thank you. That's it. Thank you. We are in committee now.
Yeah, this is a pretty straightforward application, so I'd like to move a motion to approve.
With the amended.
With, yes, amended.
Yes. And one second, Ms. West second, all in favor with the amended application? All in favor, approve. Yeah, thank you. All right, so our next item is number 16, 1174 Dofa Court Road. This is to alter the existing two-and-a-half-story detached dwelling by constructing a new complete third-floor addition and a rear second-floor balcony. And we have, they asking for, I believe, one variance. We also receive surveys, site plan, floor plan elevations, and six photographs of the property. And also, we have received from 383 West Morland Avenue. And we receive a letter of interest or concern from 399 West Morland Avenue, yeah. And we are ready for the agent or the applicant, yeah.
Through you, Madam Chair. We have the agent online and one registered speaker in concern.
Okay.
Hi, Madam Chair and members of committee.
Yes.
This is Liam, is a me of permit first, located at 9,000 Jane Street, Bond, Ontario, L4K0M6.
Did you give us your address already?
Yes.
Oh, you have, okay, yeah. So, let's, go ahead because you do have a position or a speaker want to speak, so you, you can give us a brief presentation. You have five minutes, please, yeah.
Yes, we are well aware of the, basically, letter of concern that we received from the neighbor located at 399 West Morland Avenue North. And my clients have already reached out and made sure that her, her address. And we reassured our neighbor, because the, initially, the problem only was when my client requested a bin for the demolition and the bin was kind of obstructing the, the laneway. And we immediately addressed it and they moved a truck. But I understand that the concerns are there since they, and they know that there would be construction ahead of us and they don't want to deal with it. So, we already made sure that we addressed that and this would not happen again. And we received a lovely letter from our neighbor ensuring us that she understands our point of view as well and that we will collaborate in the future so this wouldn't happen again.
Okay, thank you, yes. Any, we, we, we have a question. Can we have the next speaker then? Yeah, please, yeah.
Francesco, you've been unmuted.
Hi, this is Francesca Fattow at 399 West Morland Avenue North. So, I'm directly behind the applicants. I'm, I'm the one that had been emailing with the owners of the house about my concerns.
Okay.
I, 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 I am completely not opposed to the construction. I think the house and the layout for the application is wonderful. I, I just really want the construction executed without bothering all of the residents that share the laneway. And I've voiced this through email, that it has been on more than one occasion and they've been great at reciprocating the fact that they're going to try as much as they can to, to allow that. But I did want it on record that it has been more than once and I'm hoping that it's not for the duration of this construction.
Yes, thank you.
You know, there, there is an opportunity to get a street occupation permit if, if the longevity of these drop-off require more than five or 10 minutes.
Yes. Thank you for your presentation, but I just want to give you a comment that this committee is to look at what they are applying for. Is the zoning, is the zoning approved?
But they're using the shared laneway.
Just let me finish. All the construction issues, you can call the city. If there's something that you do not think that it should happen, they will, they will come down and resolve that for construction issues. Okay?
I appreciate you saying that as I've been on the phone for three hours waiting to speak and I appreciate you saying that, but I, I had, my application was that I... and I appreciate you saying that, but I had, my application was that I was not opposed to the project, but I did have concerns about the execution of the project.
All right, so that's what I'm trying to say. There's a proper channel that you can, you know, deliver and resolve your concern, but not in this, not with this panel. That's what I'm trying to say. Okay, let's move, let's, have you finished your presentation? You still have some two minutes, three minutes?
Yeah, no, I've been dealing with the homeowners personally and I think that we've come to a conclusion on it.
Thank you. Yeah, all right. So let's bring back the agent and address the issue raised by this speaker.
Yes, hi, Madam Chair. Yeah, we are, I believe the homeowners understand the concerns and I don't believe Francesca has anything to worry about since they will be in communication with them if a similar situation is going to happen. But no, we understand that we can get, we can get a permit and access the material through the street. And yeah, I don't believe that would be an issue. Other than that, our application is pretty straightforward, pretty simple. We are only dealing with one variance, which in my opinion is very minor. We already had precedent set in the neighborhood. The closest is 50 Bristol Avenue, which has been approved to up to 0.89. It's an FSI and ours is in nature is very minor, a lot less than what has been in the neighborhood.
There's one thing I'd like to ask whether you have discussed with your neighbor is your rear, rear second-floor balcony. Is there any kind of privacy concern or are you going to, you're going to put some privacy screen there? Anyway.
I don't believe there is any privacy concerns. Well, our neighborhood on one side, it's a commercial property and on the other, the residential, we are not even looking at their property. It's blocked by the rear existing addition. So I don't believe there is, yeah.
All right, thank you. Thank you for, yeah, for providing that information. That's important. Yeah, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, so we do not have any more questions. Now we are in committee. Yeah, thank you. Yes, Ms. West.
Yes, through you, Madam Chair. It's a very straightforward application. We just have one variance and I think the FSI is minor. Therefore, I would like to put forward a motion to approve this application with no condition.
Yes. Anyone want to second that? Mr. Bissonnet, second? All in favor with no conditions? unanimously approved. Thank you very much. Yes, approved. The next item is number 17, is 292 Runnymede Road. This is, this is to construct a new one-story auxiliary building, which is a detached garage with, as a two-car garage in the rear yard. And then we receive a plan, survey, site plan, floorplan elevation, fourteen photographs and comment from transportations and also we receive one support from 310 Runnymede. And we are ready for the applicant.
Through you, Madam Chair, we have the applicant online and one registered speaker in opposition in person.
Okay.
Enzo, you've been unmuted.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair.
Yes.
My name is Enzo Locaseno. I'm from HCDWG.
Yes.
Located at 1242, sorry, 1245 Caledonia Road, Suite 202, in Toronto.
Okay. You do have one speaker in opposition, so we would like to have a brief presentation from you. Five minutes, please.
Of course. Madam Speaker, there is an existing two-car garage currently in the backyard. If staff can bring up that photo that we sent in, that's the tree photos. There should be a separate photo. Yeah, there's a better one, but okay, that's fine. So there's an existing two-car garage currently, which doesn't really meet the parking sizes for inside a garage by the city of Toronto. So this garage, the new garage proposed, will meet the requirement and is three foot eight wider than this one here and roughly six feet longer in depth than this one. We did pull it further away from the rear lot line, but basically it's in the same location as the current. The height requirement we were requesting is because there's going to be a lift in one of the bays because the gentleman that owns the house has an old vehicle which he's going to store, plus him and his wife required two parking spaces, which will alleviate the need for a parking permit on Runnymede Road. The, again, the size of the building is based on the two-car garage requirement. Plus, we've allowed for a bit of storage within the garage itself. The landscape, we tried to maximize the amount of grass area and extend, we had to extend the asphalt driveway a little bit further to the north in order for, to allow for the car transfer of the minimum 20 feet in front, as you can see on the site plan. Now, the width of the driveway is based on the two-car garage, which is pretty much what is existing now, except for the extra three feet in width. We feel that this is well in keeping with what's built in the area. If staff can pull up the other photo of, it shows adjacent garages. Yeah, that's the letter from one of the neighbors. But there should be photos of adjacent garages that are similar in size. The unfortunate thing is when we go through the Committee of Adjustment, previous decisions in the area and permits, a lot of these garages are actually built without permits. So there's very little history with garages in this area. There's a photo of the backyard, photos, yeah. Keep going. And this, these two garages are two doors over to the south at 288 and 286 Runnymede, which are very similar, but they're pulled much further forward, which I guess allows less landscape area. We're trying to maximize the amount of landscape in this area and reduce the amount of asphalt that's currently there.
Okay.
And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, thank you. We will listen to the next speaker first. Yeah, let's bring then, oh, he's in person. Okay, welcome.
Thank you. Hello again, committee.
Yes.
Nicholas Singh, I'm representing myself this time at 209 Willard Avenue.
Okay, 209.
Okay. I just wanted to note that additional parking is mentioned in the applicant's cover letter and his presentation is contrary to the current planning objectives of the city and province in reducing or eliminating requirement for additional parking in all developments across the city. Such use of the property for parking and for an extra car and also for storage of a third car was not a desirable use of the property. I'll leave it there. Thank you.
Do you think that it should be just a one-car garage? Is that what, what your?
Yes, most of, most of the area, north and south of Blor Street, there are mostly one-car garages.
Let's see.
And my understanding is that the redevelopment proposal is to expand the garages they have there so they can, you know, store more, store a third vehicle plus have more area for parking and to avoid on-street parking, so.
Okay, thank you. Yeah. Any question to this speaker? Yeah.
Nick, you said you're speaking for yourself now for the rate pairs. So is there an impact on you personally or you're just reflecting a broader concern?
I'm reflecting a broader concern, yes.
Thanks.
Okay. Any more questions to this speaker before he, yeah, no? Okay, let's bring back the agent to address the concern of this speaker. Yeah.
Yes, good afternoon, Madam Chair. With regards to the requirement of amount of cars, typical family in the city of Toronto do own two vehicles with the storage of the extra vehicle as an accessory due to a hobby. That's something that any person would be entitled to in the city of Toronto. With regards to the use of the land, we're not changing the use of the land. We're making the garage in line with the city's requirements for parking car sizes within a garage. There's an existing double-car garage that's been there probably since the 50s. And what we're actually doing is alleviating the need for those cars to be on Runnymede Road and allowing for more space to be available to other properties. I don't see the negative impact at all to this property and more so it's a positive impact as we're going to be increasing the landscape that's not currently there now.
Thank you. Any questions? Yes.
Yeah, I have a question. So I just want to talk a little bit about the height.
Sure.
My colleagues will appreciate that I often raise height of ancillary dwellings and garages. So you're asking for an additional height and you've got a green roof, which quite frankly is very laudable. But I didn't quite hear your rationale for your need for additional height.
There's a car lift that's going to be installed and it's a minimum. As you can see there, the requirement for a car lift is a minimum of 12 foot four plus the structure of the flat roof because we have to beef up the roof in order to handle the green roof that we're proposing.
What is the car lift's for?
Yeah, so you're stacking two cars?
You can stack two cars, correct.
So you, so I think someone mentioned a three-car garage, so effectively you're a three.
No, it's not a three-car. It's a two-car, but we've got a stackable on one side.
Okay, and the other side is for what?
Just a single car. Because we're storing, we're storing one car on the lift, the upper part.
Right.
And there are two cars in the family, which are going to be stored at the lower portion.
Okay.
That's the only reason.
So how much, so the roof, it looks like you've got a parapet around the garage and within that parapet.
Yeah, that's to catch the, for the green roof.
Right. So if you, if you took the parapet off, what would the overall height be?
Took the parapet off.
It's just below four.
Yeah, the parapet currently takes up seven inches. And metric, that's 0.17 of a meter.
Right, so even without the parapet, you'd be over.
Yeah, yeah, and that's because of the structure and the spans.
Okay, thank you.
We did put a beam in there to reduce the span, but the load of the green roof, when it's saturated, we have to beef up the structure itself more than normal.
Thank you.
Yeah, just one quick question is variance five. You did mention that the driveway width is actually existing, right?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, it's existing, but because of the extra three feet, because the existing width of the driveway right now is, bear with me, 20 meters, is 6.33. But because of the extra three feet in width of the garage, we had to widen the driveway so they can get the car out.
Yes, I can see the existing curve. Okay, thank you. Yeah.
Okay.
Question?
Mr., yeah, Mr. Wade, yeah, please, go ahead.
So you mentioned very briefly, but it's not in any plans. Obviously, for the lift, you need one side of the garage. What do you, do you have a plan for the space, the extra space that you're gonna make?
No, we don't.
Okay, so that's just going to be empty space?
It's just going to be empty space, possibly storage up above. Right now, there's no allocation for the additional space above the second car, second.
You may use it for storage at some point.
Possibly.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so any more questions? Okay, so we don't have any more questions. Now we in committee. Yeah? Okay.
I'd like to speak.
Oh, Mr., yeah, Mr. Wade, please.
So first, I think it's perfectly reasonable to try to create a larger garage that, a larger garage that fits two cars better. I can see that maybe, you know, that may be convenient. However, I have no sympathy for the desire to have a third car in there. It's not the city's business to accommodate your hobby. If you have a hobby, then you find ways to do it within the city. This, this, this house is literally steps from Runnymede Station, like less than half a block. You know, they can have only one car and use the, use public transportation that they live right beside or they can have two cars and find some other way to store the valuable hobby car. Or they could store one of their cars on the street and then store the hobby car. There's lots of options. I don't think that building a supersized, super-high garage is really something that's necessary, appropriate in this situation. So I'm happy to support all the other variances, but I would not support variance number two, which is the height.
Okay. Any other comments?
I agree with Dylan. You know, I, you know, we're building an extra-high garage so that you can stack two cars and have the other side unused, which doesn't seem to me to make a whole lot of sense. I always think that, you know, when garages are, you're entitled, you're allowed to build a garage to four meters. That should accommodate pretty much everyone's needs in terms of storing a vehicle or storing two vehicles. I don't see in this instance a particular justification for it. And I, you know, not, I mean, people have a right to have a car, potentially have a right to have two cars, but, and you are close to the subway. I'm not too sure. That is my concern. It's more about the imposition of a large garage, a high garage in the backyard backing onto several properties on Bear's Ford. I just, I don't see the justification for it in this instance. So I would agree with Dylan.
Yeah, I agree with your comment, but I do support this only because I look at it from the other perspective. I'm not commenting on people's needs. Some people need five, six cars, right? We have properties asking for two levels of parking garages. But, but I'm just looking at the perspective whether it's minor. I was just saying that if it's from four meters, they're asking for about 16 inches more from the whole perspective. I think that the increase is minor because we, from that, we also gain the proposed green roof. And I thought that maybe this, that's a little bit of a trade-off for me, so I can support it because of that little bit of gain. 16 inches maybe is not necessary for most garage, but that's why they come here to ask for a little increase to suit their need. And that's my comment. All right. Any other comment? Yes, please.
Through you, Madam Chair. I agree with you. I think if you look at the variance numbers itself, so the required ancillary building height is four meter and they ask for four. for 4.46 meter means 46 centimeter extra. I think it's minor to my, to my view.
Yes.
And I think it's supportive of application as is.
Yes.
I agree. I'm supportive of the application.
All right. So do we have a motion on the floor yet?
I can, I can start?
Yes, please.
So through you, Madam Chair, I would like to put forward a motion to, to approve this application as is.
Yes. Second, Mister Business, second. Oh, in favor, it's three to two. And Mister Clay and Mister Wade, a dissent.
Through you, Madam Chair.
Yes.
Before we move on to item 18, which is our last item for this morning's agenda, I think it should be noted that after this item, the members will be taking a one-hour lunch. So the two o'clock applications will then be heard shortly after 3:00 p.m. today.
Yes, so that, yeah, so that we will just don't want to make people wait that long. And maybe you can take lunch during that time, too. Thank you. Yeah, so the next item is 500 McPherson Avenue. This is to alter the development standards, which is like an eight-story mixed-use apartment by increasing building setbacks, building height, and also to 11-story. That's including the mechanical penthouse. And they also want goes-for area and also permit a retail use for the long residential uses and also a retail use. That there will be 206 residential dwelling and instead of 152 and also 15 car parking spaces. And on this one, we receive, I think they're asking for six, seven variances. And they, we also received a survey, site plan, four plan elevations, cover letter, and others report from the agent, transportation memo. We have storm water management report, wind study report, and noise vibration report, presentation material from the agent, and also the site-specific bylaw. We also receive a staff report from community planning and opposition. We have received from 228 Spadina Road and also, that's, that's, that's it. And we also received another four letter of oppositions. We are ready for the, for the applicant.
Through you, Madam Chair. We have the agent in person and we have four registered speakers, three in person and one online.
Oh, okay, thank you. So maybe we cannot break at two o'clock. So you do have some opposition where we, we, we need a presentation from you. Please.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Am I coming through? Yes, I am. Last name's Bronskill, first initial D for David. Just my mailing address, Madam Chair, is 333 Bay Street.
Yes.
Suite 3400 in Toronto. And I am here as agent for the applicant. If staff are able to find the colored PowerPoint presentation we have, I was going to walk the committee through that just so that you could understand the variances. I have read some of the letters of opposition, but I will maybe wait until the speakers have gone and address some of their concerns in response. Just for the committee, it's a similar application that some on this panel would have seen that I spoke to on Christie near Dupont. It's a similar application that you, in terms of its nature, that you considered this morning on Avenue Road. And it's a, if I can characterize it with a bumper sticker, it's rethinking approved mid-rise developments and looking how to maybe do them better. And make no mistake, this is still a mid-rise development at 11th story. That is the definition of a mid-rise building in the city of Toronto official plan. Just as a little bit of background, we did include, thank you staff for showing that, the aerial map, just so you can see the site, northeast corner of Kendall Avenue and McPherson Avenue. You can see it's very close proximity to Dupont Station. So it does fall within the proposed delineated boundary of a major transit station area that City Council has adopted, although that OPA is still with the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing for approval. Castle Loma is to the north, just to orient you. And then you've got Dupont Avenue, east and west, to the south of the tracks, where there has been frankly more intense development, 11, 12, and 13-story buildings that have been approved, but forms part of that PMT SA context for you. Next slide, if you don't mind, staff. This is a City Council approval from June 2023. I do note in the record, just for the panel, that there is a staff memorandum from city planning staff recommending conditions. We are in support of those conditions, which I'll explain in a moment. But planning staff were in fact in support of what we're seeking here today. Although 2023 doesn't seem that long ago, a lot has changed. That is something I said about the file on Christie and it applies here as well. There is the new provincial planning statement. There is the city of Toronto's commitment to provide more housing. And most importantly, there's a new approach to mid-rise development in the city and in particular, the rear angular plane. And that's gone through council, actually in December of 2024. If you don't mind, the next slide from staff, please. This is the current massing. You can see the stepping at the rear to meet a 45-degree angular plane, certainly of a time as part of mid-rise developments. And I've helped get a significant number of those approved with that inefficient construction pattern. If you go to the next slide, if you don't mind, you can see what the mid-rise guidelines have done. Seven-and-a-half-meter setback required from the east side of the laneway, then a step back. And that blue massing is something that the mid-rise guidelines now indicate is both appropriate and desirable in terms of planning and urban design. What we have done in looking at this is, the next slide with staff, is increasing the setback for most of the building to 12 and a half meters. So taking that area in red and not deploying it as part of a new mid-rise building on the site. And instead, if staff could go to the next slide, this is where the height increase comes from. So it's taking that massing that would otherwise be permitted by the mid-rise guidelines at the rear and redeploying it on top. And again, if I can go to the next slides with staff, we've done this in a three-dimensional form. I won't belabor the point, but you can see the massing as per the current zoning bylaw. Next slide from staff, you can see in blue or green, I'm a little bit color-challenged, in terms of what that additional massing might be as per the new mid-rise guidelines. And then what we've done, you can see that then in white as it might be deployed. And then one, if staff don't mind going through just two more slides, that's the one there. Thank you. That's the chunk, like a Lego piece that's been taken off. Part of that is to ensure sunlight, direct light into the seniors' residence courtyard. That's to the north. And we've shown that with the sun. Larger setbacks, rooftop space that can accommodate more additional amenity space. That's one of the conditions of city planning staff to ensure we provide that. And ultimately, then that massing, to the next slide, is then deployed at the top of the building. So it is three stories. It is some additional GFA, but it's, we would submit to this committee, being done in a way that actually takes into account the new mid-res, mid-rise guidelines, actually creates a better rear transition relationship, allows more light into the seniors' courtyard, is going to deliver a new retail unit at grade, which staff have wanted and asked for, and as well as increased amenity space. So although there is more height, it's still a mid-rise building. It's still a mid-rise form. It's a simplified construction, but it's actually mitigating some of the impacts from a mid-rise building that could otherwise be deployed under the guidelines. So that's the presentation, just for the committee to understand what's in front of you. I know there are some speakers and so I'll come back maybe and address their comments and any questions the panel may have, although if you have some now, I'm obviously happy to answer them.
I can't hear you. Sorry.
I turned it off. We're going to listen to the opposition now and then we'll get back to the applicant.
Thank you.
Hi there.
Hi.
Thank you for allowing us. I, my name is Sue Rainville. I live at 205 Walmer Road. We are a part of, I am part of the Castle Hill Neighborhood Association.
Okay.
Not, community of 93 townhomes that are on Spadina, Davenport, and Walmer. The community was conceptually in agreement with the initial plan of the eight stories and the step design. With the new variances that have been put forward, there was no community consultation. Our only notification was the receipt by a few of the residents about the Committee of Adjustment meeting today, which was received two weeks before today's meeting. The increase to 11 floors and the removal of the step design will significantly impact many homes on the west side of Walmer. The applicant's shade models show shading beginning at 2:18 p.m. Currently, these West Walmer homes don't get any morning sun. They are reliant on afternoon and evening sun, and this will now be significantly impacted. As a result, the property values, we feel, will be significantly devalued as well. The new addition of retail is concerning. Currently, the traffic flow on McPherson and Kendall is problematic as it is today. Parking is non-existent at present, with the exception of the George Brown parking lot across the street. Where will the clients of these retailers park? The Castello laneway, which runs behind the West Walmer townhomes and behind the proposed 500 McPherson to the east, the concerns have been raised about the increased flow of traffic in the laneway, the loading dock and turn radius, and the garage access, and with the possibility of moving this to McPherson as opposed to down that Castello laneway. Number of parking spots in the proposed bill will, build will add pressure to the parking on Walmer, which is a challenge as it is today. Our ask is simple, is that we not approve these variances or as an alternative, defer the Committee of Adjustment application to mid-April so that we can allow for appropriate community involvement. Thank you.
Thank you. Any question to this speaker? Yes, please.
So just your, your opening statement, you mentioned that many of the townhomes don't get any light in the morning from the, is there something that blocking the light coming in from the east? I thought I heard you say they don't get morning sunlight.
Well, it's just the way, it's, it's the way the sun goes. There's, there's, we're 93 townhomes. If you, if you could go, there's a slide that shows, it's not part, I don't have part of my presentation, but where it shows the Walmer, the, the build, the proposed build, and then the Walmer Castle Hill community build. So go, sorry, go back if you could. One more. Keep going back. No, we, no, it's okay. So they're essentially 93 townhomes. A third of them are on Walmer on the west side. A third of them are on Walmer on the east side.
Right.
So they don't get the morning sun because of the height of the houses on the east side of Walmer.
So the height, so the obstruction from the east is because of the townhouse development, not something else?
Correct.
Okay, that's, I just wanted to confirm. I was looking around. I was trying to see if there are, is there a mid-rise on the east side and-
No.
Didn't see one. Okay, that's fine. I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any more question to this speaker? No, no, Mister, okay, thank you very much. Yeah. Do we have more? Yeah, we do have more speakers.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the committee. My name is Doug Pateman. That's first initial D and then last name P-A-T-E-M-A-N. And I'm a lawyer at Kagan Saucery Demello Wiener Park, and my address is 188 Avenue Road. And that's my office address, of course.
Okay.
I'm here today before the committee to inform you that I represent Miss Suanna Sexsmith and Mr. Alexander Glaskin, who live directly behind the application.
Okay.
You've heard submissions-
Sir, what's their address?
It's 217. It's directly, if, if the, if the planner can just show on the picture, you can, in my opposition letter, you can see it's directly behind the application on Walmer. You've heard submissions today that the proposal is in fact a mid-rise development. But I'm here to, to outline the specific impacts to why this is not a desirable and wanted development to the land. It should be noted that as the property is actually physically and geographically above all the nearby low-rise townhouses, it is in effect a significantly taller building when it comes to the individual and cumulative impacts of each variance on the adjacent properties. I would just like, in addition to my letter, to turn the committee's attention to in the, the often cited official plan section of 4.1.5, where we're not truly maintaining the prevailing character of the neighborhood. The development focuses all its construction and, sorry, not all of its construction, all of its traffic movements, including vehicle and truck movements, into a very narrow laneway. I'm sure this committee has turned its head to the transportation memo that was circulated. And you'll notice it's mere inches or even a foot or two for, for a truck to go down this, this very narrow laneway. It's right down the street from, from my office and you can often see, see seniors and pets walking through the neighborhood. This proposed development, although to be expected that, that intensification's going to happen with such close proximity to major transportation infrastructure, has an extreme impact on a very narrow range of, of users. For those reasons, I'm going to respectfully request that this committee deny all the applications. As you heard from the, the Neighborhood Association, the previous application was, was approved by council and in fact involved major concessions and consultations with the local residents. What's before the committee today isn't, isn't compatible with what the residents intended and what they wish to see in their community. It's a very beautiful neighborhood. The neighbors are very, very passionate, but it's, cannot be mistaken that to allow such further intensification in a massively geographically constrained neighborhood, just as far outside of what is intended by the official plan and cannot be considered in the intent and purpose. Although we are appreciative, that development should occur on, on a parking lot, I respectfully ask that the applicant be tied to the previous application that was approved by the committee. I'm appreciative that, you know, comments often drag on and I'm happy to answer any questions the committee might have.
Yes, I do. I just missed what you just said about tied to where, with the approval tied to what? Sorry, I missed that, what?
To the previous application.
Oh, I see. Come back to the previous.
Yeah.
Okay. Question? Yeah.
Thank you. So you, you appreciate that the previous application was approved by council. What I didn't hear from you was what the incremental impact of the changes that are being proposed today have on your client.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I appreciate they just don't want a building there, but there's some changes to this. And so what, what would the impact of these changes be on your client?
No, thank you. And just to be frank, our, my clients appreciate that, you know, development was going to happen here. There's not too many parking lots within a walking distance of a subway station that you can't expect to be redeveloped. The increased impacts are, as you heard from the ratepayer group, higher, higher levels of, of density and lost sunlight. Despite this being to the definition of a, of a mid-rise building under, you know, new direction from, from council, the property itself is nearly an entire story above the adjacent low-rise housing. And I just would like to highlight that although this, it's one of those situations where the policy on a specific property might support further intensification, but I just wanted to bring to the committee's attention that due to geographic constraints, right, we have the rail line to the south and then the hill up to Castle Loma to the north, there's a very severe impact to a very narrow amount of, of landowners. And because essentially the nearby townhouses are an entire story below the existing-
So I'm just going to cut you off there because what I'm trying to get at-
Yeah.
Is for your client, what's the additional impact? And I thought I heard, is it shade?
Shading and increased-
So additional shading on your client's property?
Exactly.
Okay, that's what, and we didn't hear that. We'll ask the agent that when he returns.
Okay, thank you.
And actually, I do have, actually, I was going to ask the same questions, but then she jumped out the head of me. But I do- But I do like to ask you, since the last present, uh, application, the agent actually have explained in terms of, with diagrams, to actually the attempt, the new proposal is actually make the shadowing better, by, by not increasing it on this side where the townhomes are, but stacking it up, just so that as a result, by, by playing this sort of legal, what called the planning, they actually move the height of the building, the increase of the height more towards the building itself, rather than to, to increase it by on the, on the other side where the townhomes are or the laneways are. Do you actually appreciate that that change will actually not make the shadowing worse, but actually improve it?
That's, that's to be found, that's to be found after construction. Oftentimes, you know, the study doesn't capture every unique circumstance, if it's the, the day before the, the winter solstice, are you going to get sun at 3:00?
We can get the agent to explain that, but that, that's what I understood, the change is actually attempt to actually mitigate all this by making the revision, but not making the shadowing worse, so that they have to move things around, rather than to just straight up. Because when we look at the variances, we think that we, they got just to going to increase the height, but actually, they do make a lot of cut and, cut and paste, or some, you know, moving the massing around to address that, that shadowing effect. That's what I see other people in, listening to the presentation to get it, that's, that's all. All right. Any other question to this speaker? Uh, no, thank you very much, we will bring the, the next speaker, yeah, please, yeah.
Thank you for your time, appreciate it.
My name is Gary Siegel, and my address is 342 Spadina Road, Suite 504 Toronto. I represent Nancy Ennis.
Can we just ask you to move over?
Oh.
Thank you very much. Sorry.
Oh, I see, okay, thank you. I thought you were online, because I thought you were the previous big, okay.
Sorry, I rep, everything okay? I represent Nancy Ennis, who lives and owns the property at 204 Walmer Road, which is next door to one of the lady that spoke earlier at 205. I have, one, I support everything that's been said up to this point in time, and I'm, I'm looking at this picture up on the wall here, but I presume that's the front of the building. The rear, as we, I don't know if they have a picture of the rear of the building, but in the previous project, yes, thank you, in the previous project, the stepbacks were in the rear. Now, the laneway there is very, very narrow, and every one of the townhouses along their 36 or 7 of them on the west side have garages. Some have single garages, some of the larger units have double garages. It is a very busy laneway for people, but it's narrow and it's hard to get in and out. The additional units will cause even greater problems there with garbage trucks, delivery trucks, and various other issues. The other problem is, besides the shade, look at what's here now as opposed to what was there before in the rear. What you have now is, I don't know if it's three or four stories right up to the edge of the laneway, and then it goes, goes back in, I don't know, I think they said 10, 12 meters, and then you have a straight wall going up, I don't know, 100 feet, whatever it is, well, it looks like about 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9 stories with a solid wall there. In the past, in the previous development or, that was approved, it was stepped back in the back there. So, it's much easier, from a, from a point of view of aesthetics and looking at the, at this building, the past was, you know, much more acceptable to, to my client and to the people who are living on Walmer. Now, I don't know why the gentleman who spoke on behalf of the developer referred to issues that had, which obviously the board is aware of, but none of us are aware of, something on Christie Avenue and, and whatever happened there. I don't think it was terribly relevant, and I don't think that the board should consider anything that was said about Christie Avenue. Currently on that property is a two-story building and a parking lot, which is to the north of that two-story building, and the build, the last building on that block, which I think is some sort of a retirement home, is five stories. The eight-story building that was approved for there seemed, we knew, because it needed, it's going to be developed, but it seemed reasonable. Pushing this to 11, which is the top end of the mid-range of apartments now, in an area that has unbelievable traffic issues all the time. If you go up, if you're going north in the evening on, I don't want to, it's called Kendall there, I guess, but it really, it becomes Spadina as you go across Davenport, you've got backups there, all the way up to St. Clair, all in front of Casteloma, down the hill, all the way to, all the way to Davenport. That's what you have for two hours at night, and this is just going to add more traffic to that area. In the morning, it's the reverse, you've got all kinds of traffic there going southbound. Now, it seems to me that in terms, and I, I'm not a planning lawyer, I am a lawyer, but I, I don't know anything much about planning, though I did work 50 some odd years ago at Arnup Folds, Weir as it then was, and that's going back well over 50 years ago, and then John Arp went to the Court of Appeal and it became, became as it is now, Weir and Folds. I wasn't involved working on the planning side. In any event, what I think the city has done, if you're looking at that neighborhood, is make a big distinction between what's being done on south of the railroad tracks and what's north of the railroad tracks. And I think the railroad tracks are really logical division between neighborhoods. The city is allowing a lot of development on Dupont. Some of the buildings, I guess, are maybe 15, 16 stories, maybe even higher than that. There's more planned, because I see signs up further down the road.
Yes.
So, there's this logical.
Excuse me, sir, yours, five minutes is up, can you give us a?
All right, there's this logical break. On the other side of Dupont, that isn't, that is not what should be happening. You know, it's logical to put in an eight-story building with those stepbacks in the back, which makes it nice for the people, but to cut out the sun and have to look at a solid brick wall going up nine stories, which is something like 90 feet.
Thank you, yes.
Is not logical.
And, any question to this speaker?
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, let us more check, whether there are questions for you. Okay, no, no more, thank you. Yes, we'll bring on the next one, thank you.
Gay Gutterham, you've been unmuted.
Thank you, can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Gay Gutterham, I live at 228 Spadina Road, which is the furthest set of townhouses from this development.
Okay.
There's a lot of interference there.
Yes.
Okay. Mid-rise, mid-rise heights recommend, there's a lot of noise happening there, okay. Mid-rise heights, mid-rise heights recommend at most 36 meters of height for a planned right-of-way width of 36 meters, but, but Kendall and McPherson are only 30 meters, and yet this proposal is for a height of 39.1 meters. All buildings on the streets surrounding this entire block are five stories or less. This request is unprecedented. How can it be considered a minor variance? Also, it doesn't take into account the new avenues proposal, which, if approved, will allow 555 McPherson to go much, much higher, creating a fortress-like wall overlooking our 93 townhomes. In the prior approved project for this site, the developer had agreed to create landscape planters on the balconies along the east side terraces, terraces, to mitigate the negative impacts of overlook onto our terraces, our only outdoor amenity spaces in most cases. What happened to the promise of landscape planters with this new proposal? With the added setback, the lane will be only seven meters wide. All the townhomes on this lane have garages that exit directly onto this lane. How can the 213 cars between this development and 555 McPherson be added to the traffic using Castello Lane? Now that I understand this proposal includes a convenience store, I wonder whether anyone has looked at the danger inherent in this idea. A very large number of students going to and from George Brown now use the sidewalk on the south side of McPherson and the west side of Rendell, Pendle, to get from the subway to the school. It's a blind corner for drivers, but as long as students don't cross Kendall, there's no danger. There's another street north of this blind corner called Bridgman, which runs west off Kendall to Bathurst. To enter the school, the students have to cross Bridgman right after turning onto Kendall. There's a lot of traffic heading on this McPherson to Kendall route during rush hour. Some are waiting at the corner for the students to clear Bridgman, which they cross in a steady stream with their phones in hand. The cars waiting for students to clear the intersection at Kendall and Bridgman prevent drivers behind them from seeing what's ahead, because they're backed up around the blind corner. Once the students clear the Kendall and Bridgman intersection, which can take a while as they stream out of the school, and the cars heading west on Bridgman can then proceed, the cars behind them often gun it, heading north in their impatience. That is precisely when they're likely to hit students crossing to this proposed convenience store. The corner's a blind corner, there's a very real danger that students will cross Kendall from west to east to access any store there. They will be invisible to cars dashing around the blind corner. The original approvals were for two very similar buildings of eight stories with an angular plane, which was amenable to us. This is only one of these two buildings, the one at the south end. What will the developer of the north building at 555 Davenport ask for, especially if Davenport is approved as an avenue? I feel this application needs to be made in the context of both buildings and cannot be considered a minor variance. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any question to this speaker, please? No, we don't have any questions for you, so do we have any other speakers?
Three, Madam Chair, no more speakers.
Okay, so we are ready to bring back the applicant, Mr. Bonsky, to address to all those issues that raised. I don't know whether you can do it in five minutes, but appreciate if you can, yeah.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I'll do my best. So, first, Madam Chair, on the issue of consultation, I'm a bit surprised it was raised. My client did reach out to the first speaker and that raised an association. The email was acknowledged by the first speaker. My client offered a Zoom meeting to go over the plans and explain it to them, and there was never any take-up on that offer. So, consultation, I've said this to the committee before, is a two-way street, you can't force people to have the conversation, the best we can do is initiate it, and my client did. It's just that the first speaker on behalf of that resident association, for whatever reason, didn't continue the conversation, that's their right, but I don't think it's fair to then come and criticize my client for not having reached out or consulted when, in fact, they did. And I double-checked my emails while I was sitting there to ensure that I had that fact correct for the committee, and I do. The other resident association in the area I also know met with city planning staff, as well as the local councillor, and so the resident associations have been engaged. I would go back and note that planning staff are in support, there's no concerns from transportation staff, and there's no letter from the local councillor, either asking for deferral or refusal. In terms of the laneway that was brought up, I would note for the committee, it is not a small laneway, it is a standard laneway, it is five and a half meters today. Through this proposal, my client will be required to dedicate a further half meter to make it a standard six-meter laneway for the city. So, it's not a small lane, it's in fact the standard width of a city lane in the city once the development proceeds. Transportation staff have reviewed the report from BA Group that's been submitted. That report, which I don't propose to force staff to call up, has vehicular movements for the largest of trucks that would access that type G loading space. BA Group's opinion is it works, transportation staff of the City of Toronto agree that it works. I don't think there's any issue with using that laneway, and in fact, that's exactly as this committee knows what the official plan directs in terms of accessing a site like this for a mid-rise building. In terms of traffic, I would simply note it is a rental building, so this is going to be 206 rental units in close proximity to the subway. While there will be inevitably cars that use it, the whole goal and hope of a proposal such as this is that it actually uses the transit within which it is close proximity to. And so those rental units, we hope, will actually use the Dupont subway station as is intended by the official plan. There was a comment that it doesn't meet the intent of 4.1.5 of the official plan and the prevailing context. I would simply note for the committee, that's the wrong policy. The lands are not designated as neighborhoods. They are designated as mixed-use areas, they used to be institutional, in fact, through the previous approval process, they were redesignated from institutional to mixed-use areas. So, there's no test about respecting and reinforcing the existing physical character of the neighborhood, that's just an erroneous submission to you, and I would ask you to ignore it. In terms of shadows, I'm, I'm going to impose upon staff, and try and do both do shadows and the comment about rear transition, by asking if they could put up, from our presentation, the elevation, not the 3D massing, but the elevation, thank you for being in, the presentation, a little bit further forward, it's the one that shows the red and green, if you can keep going forward a little bit for me, that one would be great. The deputy secretary treasurer would be very annoyed with me if I went up to the screen, so I'm not going to do it. But if I can ask the committee just to imagine a 45-degree red line from the uppermost point of that red area, that's the massing that is now permitted in terms of the new mid-rise guidelines, and you draw a 45-degree angular plane from that up, it's actually not going to intersect with the top of the building. Okay? So, shadows, when we measure them at March 21 and September 21, are actually better with this height than they would be with a lower building with that massing pushed further east. We did do shadow studies, there is about an hour of additional shadow from the approval when compared with this on the townhouses in the afternoon to the east. I do acknowledge that. We also took a very careful look in terms of the mid-rise guidelines, of the five hours of sunshine that's required on the opposite side of the street, we do meet that test, but I do acknowledge there's an hour in the afternoon on those town, on those terraces. Those terraces, though, are not the intent of the shadow policies, it's the public realm, and I would simply ask the committee to note, we're actually going to be better under this regime, there will be more shadows, but better than what the new mid-rise guidelines contemplate. And finally, in terms of the speaker indicating that the terracing was better, behind that red, if you look very carefully, is the outline of the lower portions of that stepped building that are being removed. As I noted to the committee, this massing, it is straight up, that's a more efficient construction, but it's 12 and a half meters now away from the east side of that laneway, whereas the previous approval had those stepped portions, and the mid-rise guidelines allow it to come within seven and a half. So, it's actually pushing. So it's actually pushing that massing further away. It is slightly taller, I acknowledge that, but it's now at 12 and a half from the east side of the laneway, so it's not looming over those backyards. As the Lego pieces I showed you, it's actually, I think, a very thoughtful response to the context, to the new mid-rise guidelines, to achieving more rental units. And in terms of, the last thing I'll say, I know I'm over time, the last thing I'll say in terms of the non-residential is, it's about 200 square meters max, it's not a big space, but it is intended to animate the street, to contribute to what's happening with the college in the area, and actually have some pedestrian traffic in the area come on the other side of the street. It's a good thing staff are supportive of it, and in fact, staff have said, although we've got a maximum GFA now for non-residential, staff's condition, which we support, is make sure there's a minimum too. So they, staff not only want our aspiration, they want us actually to do it because the condition says have a minimum amount, so we have to do it, and we are accepting of that, we're prepared to do it. So I actually think this is a great project, much improved for rental housing in the city in proximity to transit, with better impacts than might be permitted under the new mid-rise guidelines.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yeah, you, thank you for your response to the issues, but we do have some questions for
Please.
Yeah, please.
Thanks, Dave.
I have some questions.
I want to just focus on the shadowing issue.
Yeah.
Which frankly was raised, and is probably one of the biggest concerns of the residents in the townhome area. You mentioned it's an incremental one hour, I mean, I was a little surprised, normally we would see a shadow report, a shadow study in the background material.
They're attached to the plans.
Ah.
So that's where they actually are.
I don't have them, do I?
Yeah, they're attached to these plans, and staff are quicker than me.
Oh, there you go, that sort of just underscores that maybe I didn't look at the whole thing.
No, 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 they, in full fairness, they're at the back of the plans.
Fair enough. So an additional hour, do you know, like, how much shadowing was on the original proposal? I'm just trying to get a sense of, like, what, overall, from what it was before to what it is now, like, what is the shadowing?
So in, on the, for the townhouses on the west side, to your question earlier, they actually, those terraces, they actually shadow themselves, because you've got a wall and terrace, and so the sun in the morning, they're actually shadowing themselves.
Right.
So the complaint about lack of morning sun is actually their own building. Then you come around into the noon hour, and there is still sun. Then you come around into the afternoon, and the shadows here, it's around 2:30 when you start to see the shadows from the additional height, and that's why I said it's about additional hour of incremental
So it would have been
The hazard right under the bylaw.
3:30 under the original proposal.
About that would be about right, yeah. It's, I don't have, we have them at the 218, 318, 418 intervals.
Right.
I don't have a set of shadow studies that show exactly the minute when the shadows come on versus before, and then, so I don't have that, so I am approximating, I do acknowledge that. We did look at the, we had an elevation, we didn't put it in, and I should have, with that red line with the, to the new mid-rise guidelines, because I do think we didn't run shadow studies of a same-height mid-rise building versus what we're proposing, and that's because there would have been less shadow.
Right.
What I probably should have run is new mid-rise guidelines against the hazard right.
Right.
And it would have been a slightly longer incremental shadow impact on those terraces.
Okay.
Okay. I do have a question, but it's gonna, it's maybe a more common, so you've on the, you look at this diagram from the, where the townhouse is, it's actually, you have increased the tall wall, it's actually a 12-meter setback, has a 12-meter, and then you have a six-meter laneway, which is
I don't want to, sorry to interrupt you, Madam Chair.
Yes.
It's 12 and a half from the east side of the lane. I don't, I don't want you to think it's 12 and a half plus six, I don't want to mislead the committee.
Yeah, okay, fine, but the, most of the townhomes that, near the building, has also, they also have a garage, and then the, and then a yard, and then the main building, right?
Yes.
So it's sort of substantial distance between the main massing of both your, both your proposal and most of the townhomes, right?
I, we did measurements, the townhouses on the east side, in fairness, the ones that are the furthest south have the largest rear setbacks.
Yes.
They then sort of
They're curved, yes.
Because of the curve of the road, they curve as well. At the, at the south end, and this is from the lowest portions of the building, it's about 20 meters from our east wall, not the, not the upper floors, but the lowest point that's, that would be closest to the lane, it's about 20 meters to the west wall of the towns. As they then curve back, that lowest wall, it's about 12 and a half meters from the lowest wall to the rear wall of those towns. And just to remind the committee, 11 meters is the typical mid-rise, five and a half, five and a half, and also the old 43886 zoning bylaw, five and a half, five and a half. So we're a little bit above what would be a typical window-to-window type situation in that case across the lane.
Yes. So the second question is, actually, you have mentioned earlier, is about the staff report that they recommend two conditions, and I just would like to know whether you can meet what they asked, because
Yes.
It seems that they have, this is some certain of demand on the amenity space, and all this, you were able to meet, right?
We would, and, and Madam Chair, the, I spoke only about the condition of having a minimum non-res. We are in support as well of the condition about the amenity space, that actually secures more amenity space than under the existing approval. There was a decreased amount of outdoor amenity space, this would actually secure the parent bylaw rate for amenity space of four square meters for each dwelling unit, of which two, a minimum of two, has to be indoor. Our current stats show 476 square meters of indoor amenity space, which is slightly above what would be required, the outdoor is shown at 348 square meters of outdoor, a little bit below the two. So right now, we're showing a bit more indoor than two, but we would be meeting the four, and the four is not what is required by the site-specific bylaw approved by council in 2023.
Okay, it's about, yeah, okay, thank you, that's, that's good explanation, yeah. Any more question to?
Question.
I'm sorry. Oh, yes, Mr.
Just a couple of short questions. Are you adding any additional parking in relation to the additional units?
Our, our parking remains the same as per the parent bylaw. I'm not sure, if I'm understanding your question correctly, sir?
Yeah, that's right, so there won't be additional, there won't be more cars than there were previously.
That is true, that is true, yes, we're not varying the ratio, so the additional units will trigger an incremental increase in the number of parking spaces.
So there will be some more parking spaces.
Yes, so, so the initial, so we would have residential, I'm just looking at, I just want to make sure I'm giving you the right supply numbers. There would be roughly 111 parking spaces for residential, and the March 2023, we are at about 98 spaces, so it's not, it's not a one-to-one increase, but it is an increase.
So there is a few more, there'll be a few more cars using
Yes.
Laneway, but not, not a lot. Okay, thanks. Second question, I know this isn't directly within your purview, but one of the commentators raised the concern about the intersection of Kendall and McPherson, and I just had a quick Google Maps, it doesn't seem like there's a lot of traffic control there. Do you know if the city is, given that there may be more crossing because of the, because of the retail, do you know if the city is going to be looking at the intersection to improve pedestrian safety?
Through you, Madam Chair, I don't know the answer to that question as to whether the city's looking at it, I can't answer that. And, and sorry, just, I should give you this in full disclosure, the previous ratio per unit for parking was about .65. Like I said, we're not going up one-to-one, we, this ratio would be about .54 based on the unit count of 206 units. So I just wanted to make sure that, through you, Madam Chair, I gave Mr. Reed those, those numbers, so I had full disclosure.
Thank you. Do you think that, I mean, as a representative of the developer, that you could talk, maybe let transportation services know about this consideration and help facilitate a discussion about that, about in terms of the safety at the intersection?
For sure, I know my client is listening, I know my client's planning consultant and transportation consultant are also listening today, it is certainly something that can be raised with the city as a concern that has been expressed through this process, yes.
Thank you. Any more questions from my panel? Okay, I think we have finished our questions, now we are in committee. Okay, let's start, can break for lunch.
You want to get to lunch? Is that what you said?
Are you encouraging us not to talk too much? I'm happy to start.
Yes, please sit.
So I, I, it will have some impact on the residence of Walmer, the way it's designed. I do think that the, I mean, first of all, the city has clearly indicated a desire to have more, less step backs and more buildings, and this fits with that. But I do appreciate very much the way that they have actually moved the, moved the massing. I think it will actually be much better for the people on Walmer than the, it was simply slapped into where it was. Removing some of that in the middle creates, you know, reduces the overall massing effect, even if there's going to be more shadow, it reduces the overall massing effect, and I think it's actually quite creative, so I think that's, that's been done well. And certainly adding the additional units is something that the city is looking for. Again, I'm not generally, I generally a little, often a little wary of the idea of using a commutative adjustment to add more height, but in this case, it's clearly something reflecting a change in city policy, so I think it is appropriate. And like I said, I think that the, the way it's been done is actually quite creative. I also very much appreciate the fact that additional amenity space is being created, by contrast to the Avenue Road one that we saw earlier, I think that's really important and valuable, and I appreciate that they are making that effort. I also think that adding that retail space is actually a very good thing, it will introduce some more, some more life to the street and provide a useful service, so I think that's good as well. So overall, I think that, I understand that it will have some, also, I wanted to say that I do sympathize with the concerns about the laneway being used, it will have a symbiotic impact, I'm not really sure that trucks will have that easy a way of getting in, I saw the diagrams, and it looks like a fairly complicated process, but that was actually part of the original proposal, that's not something that we're looking at. The, that was already there, that's not really changing, so it's not really within our mandate, so, while I do understand the concerns about that, I don't think that that's within our purview. So overall, I think that this is actually a very creative and thoughtful proposal, and I would support it.
Thank you. I have another comment, yeah, Mr. Clay, yes.
Yeah, I'll wait, and I echo Dylan's comments, I, I look at this a little bit more broadly in terms of this corridor, mixed-use corridor, which is undergoing quite dramatic transition, we're seeing a lot of intensification along this entire corridor, particularly old employment lands, which are being converted into residential use, which I think is a really positive thing to reuse that type of underutilized land into necessarily a needed residential space. It's really important that this particular site is walkable to a subway station, a major subway station, it's also walkable to bus routes on Davenport and Dupont, it's a pretty good location in terms of accessibility, a higher-order transit, so I think that speaks well to additional intensification and the purpose for getting additional intensification into this particular site, I think that's a positive thing. I was initially concerned about the shadowing impact, but I think the agent rightly noted that the incremental change is really quite minor. I appreciate the comments and the concerns and the input from the surrounding neighbors and residents, but I, to a certain extent, it sounds a little bit like trying to relitigate the original proposal, and I'm not sure that's the case. What I always tried to get at is, what's the added impact of what's being proposed in front of us, and I didn't really get a sense that there's a dramatic incremental impact. So from that perspective, I don't see it being a particularly negative proposal relative to what was there and previously approved. And to Dylan's point, you know, the changes in massing is really, I think, a really quite innovative way of increasing the density, and particularly given that, I think it's to the north, there's a retirement home, and opening up that plaza to more sunlight for retirees, I think is actually a pretty good outcome of the redesign. So similarly, I, I think this is a really good proposal, we don't always see great proposals, but adding additional density, but I think there's been an attempt to try and modify this in a way that minimizes the incremental impact on the surrounding area, so I support it.
Okay, any other comment?
I'll just be short and say that I find it very supportable.
Yes, my comment is the same, and then I just want to mention that, because the people see it as an increase in height automatically, they think that it's a more impact in the shadowing, but because of the redesign, actually, I think the current design is probably better in terms of opening up distances between the townhomes and the building. The shadow impact is already there before even the previous, previous proposal, okay, that's my, all right, so do, it sounds like we have a motion on the floor.
Well, we don't actually, but
It sounds like it.
I'm happy to, Dylan, did you want to take this one?
Yeah, sure, I'm happy to take this motion. Given the discussion, the reasons given, reasons given by my colleagues, I move that we approve these variances with the planning conditions specified by city planning.
Yes, Mr. Clay, second, or in favor of the conditions? Okay, or in favor, oh, yeah, unanimously approved, thank you very much for coming, yeah, it's approved, yes. So now it's 3:38, Ms. Saratino, what time is to come back?
Through you, Madam Chair. Through you, Madam Chair, it's 2:38, so we'll be back in one hour.
In one hour, okay, thank you very much, yes.
Thank you.
Yes.